Good evening. I will now call to order the May 1st, 2025 Board of Education Meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of Chumash, Tongva, Fernando, Tatwam, and the First Nation on which we are learning, educating, and living. Can I have Melania Agopian from Burbank High School Skills USA lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Melania. Ms. Quatero, please take the roll call.
Member Kano. Member Weisberg.
Present.
Clerk Tabit.
Present.
Vice President Ponser Kamkar.
Present.
President Agakanyan.
Present. We have five members. We have quorum reporting on closed sessions. Item 3D. That was moved by Vice President Abby Ponser Kamkar and seconded by Clerk Tabit. Eyes were five, no noes. And the second item, 3E, that was also moved by Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Dr. Weisberg, five eyes, no noes. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I would like to recommend two adjustments to be placed right before item 8A. The first is a performance by our Dolores Huerta Choir, and the second is for some of our admin positions that are being filled, and we'd like to recognize our new people.
Dr., just for the record, can you tell me which items those are specifically that were moving?
There is no item for Dolores Huerta, and the other item was under superintendent's comments.
9C. Thank you. Are my colleagues okay with that? Go ahead, Dr. Paramo.
Thank you. I would love to invite the principal of Dolores Huerta to come up and to introduce her choir.
All right. I am Robin Hatch. I'm the principal of Dolores Huerta Middle School, and I am so lucky because I got to go with the Magrigoles to New York City where they got to perform at Carnegie Hall. They were part of the National Youth Choir, and they were invited to perform, and they were the only middle school choir invited. Everyone else was part of a high school choir. And they represented Burbank so well. I was so proud. And so we are going to hear one of the songs they sang at Carnegie Hall here tonight. So here comes Ms. Casey Solo, our choir director.
Thank you. Okay, wait, go that way. I'm gonna have them face those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Patrick, you gotta go all the way. There's a lot of them, so.
It's okay.
Bear with us. Okay, maybe not that far. This is center. Okay, I lied. Way more this way. Way more this way. Okay, and just squeeze back as much as you can. Next row. And just try your best to squeeze in so that you can see me. Okay, if you can back up anymore, back up a little more. Yeah, just leave a gap for those people to see. That would be cool. Yeah, just stop there. That's fine. Oh, no, that was weird.
We're just coming to watch.
Oh, yeah, sure. Everybody's taking a wobble at the pass. Okay, Magrigoles, take a tiny step that way. Try to make a space for your head so that you can see me. And if you're in the front and you're tall, like Mikey, because, you know. So they're standing in these spots because of what voice part they sing. Usually I wouldn't put the tall people in front. Okay, here's. This is "Florite Solite" by Dan Forrest. Oh, sure. Front row, squat. Well, okay, not if you're right by the people. Second row, you know, sorority squat. Everybody look at Deena Gurdja.
The smallest one.
Yeah, everybody's principal. I said, yours is the principal, right in the middle. Good job. Oh, you're trying. Thank you.
All right, as the moving gets with, one more time, everyone, for the choir. And for the teachers and staff, and also for the parents. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right. We'll just wait a little more. You can go home. You don't have to, but. All right, Dr. Paramo, we've moved items. But before we do that. So every time I see the Huerta Choir, I get so excited. I skipped an item. So items for future agenda? Any of my colleagues? Yes? Vice President Ponser Kamkar.
The usual suspects. I have two. The first is, we did a mobile phone policy earlier this year. I want to bring back the high school mobile phone policy because I know they are doing pilots this year. And what would be great is, along with that, any sort of data, quantitative or otherwise, that we have about how things have gone this year with the new policy?
Absolutely.
And then the other was, I know we talked a little bit about enrollment last, about there was a request around enrollment last time. I think what would be helpful for that as part of that is to essentially do it in a study session. What I'd like to see is almost looking at the same kind of data we looked at with the demographers for our board districts and being able to see kind of enrollment pattern, like enrollment patterns currently, like so whether there's any changes to be made from that perspective, in addition to kind of forward-looking overall demographic trends would be great.
Ask a clarifying question. Would you like that to be a superintendent's committee? I'm just trying to think about whether or not the process would be different. So I'm just trying to make sure that we do this in the way that you envisioned.
I think we could start it out there. I think it would be good to have the whole board's input on it, though, eventually.
Sure.
Just because I think it would be good for us all to wrestle with the data itself.
I'm thinking of a model where you have a couple of board members on that committee, and then the committee can come to a board meeting and do a presentation so the entire board can engage in a conversation.
Yeah, it might be helpful to have a couple of folks have a first pass at it. That's fine.
Sure.
Do you want to do that as part of our facilities committee, or would you rather have it be something separate?
Something separate.
Okay, cool.
Okay, are you volunteering to be on that committee?
Almost always, sure.
Thank you. So we have Vice President Kamkar and Dr. Weisberg. Congratulations on your new committee assignment. Anything else? Yes, Dr. Weisberg.
This is not a new, but just a sort of a gentle nudge. I think that summer is a good time to talk about this, but just taking a look at all of the contracting out we do, specifically in SPED, and have a conversation about cost and also whether or not that's because we've flown positions and can't find someone, or et cetera, et cetera.
Any other items? All right, thank you very much. Superintendent Dr. Paramo.
Yes, I would like to invite Dr. Harris to come to the podium. She has a few announcements to make.
Good evening, Board President Agakanyan, Board Members, Superintendent Paramo, colleagues, and community. I am pleased to introduce you to three new administrators tonight. I think I will just call them up alphabetically one at a time. Ms. Emily Coyne, I invite you to the podium. Emily Coyne, a proud product of our Burbank schools, returns to our district as a new Assistant Principal at Joaquin Miller Elementary. As a former William McKinley Elementary and Dolores Huerta Middle School student, Emily's passion for education was sparked early by the inspiring teachers and leaders who guided her. She holds a BS in Liberal Studies with a minor in History, an MS in Educational Leadership from Pepperdine University, and Administrative Services credential from Lake Hope. Emily has served Burbank students as a teacher at Providenceia Elementary and an SCL teacher at the Burbank Adult School. During her time in Burbank, she was again inspired by her incredible collaboration with colleagues and the exceptional leadership and mentorship she received, which enforced her reinforced her commitment to serving students and the broader school community. Most recently, she was the Assistant Principal of a TK through 6 school in the New Hall School District, where she focused on academic achievement, social-emotional learning, and building a positive, inclusive school culture. Known for her commitment to academic excellence, equity, student engagement, and strong partnerships, Emily is trained in Project GLAD and Kagan strategies. She's passionate about creating, welcoming, empowering, and inclusive school environments where students' gifts are celebrated. And each student recognizes they are a valuable, responsible citizen in a diverse global society. She is excited to return home and collaborate with the Joaquin Miller community and all educational learning partners to continue its tradition of excellence, connection, and shared success. Emily especially looks forward to supporting the Miller model, striving for excellence. Congratulations, Emily.
Good evening, President Agakaki, Members of the Board, Unified School Board, Superintendent Dr. Paramo, and District Leadership. Thank you so much for the warm welcome. It is both an honor and a humbling experience to return to Burbank, a district that has shaped me in so many meaningful ways. As a former student, as Dr. Harris mentioned, and a teacher in Burbank, this community helped lay the foundation for who I am today. I've been fortunate to be mentored by inspiring leaders throughout my journey, especially Jen Culbertson, Talar Tapoleon, Kathy Marcy, Roseanne Webb, and Dennis Danielson, and their impact continues to guide me today. To now return as an Assistant Principal at Miller Elementary is truly full circle. I am deeply grateful for this opportunity to serve, to lead, and to give back to the community that gave so much to me. I'm especially thankful for the chance and opportunity to work side along Ms. Judy Hessian, whose leadership and commitment to students and staff I greatly admire. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Clerk Tabit. Welcome back. Thank you, Burbank. And thank you as a Miller alumni from 100 years ago. Give or take, right. I look forward to your leadership there. It's an outstanding school, as all our schools in Burbank are, but that's a special place in my heart. So thank you for taking good care of it.
Thank you for having me.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to add, finally, someone from Pepperdine, so thank you very much.
Go Waves.
Go Waves.
But also go Bruins. We gotta stick together.
Calm down, USC people, calm down. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I would now like to welcome forward Mrs. Jennifer Griffith. The Burbank Unified School District is proud to announce the selection of Mrs. Jennifer Griffith as a new Assistant Principal at Jefferson Elementary School. Mrs. Griffith brings 23 years of dedicated service to the education community. Her journey in education began in Tucson, Arizona, where she gained valuable experience as a classroom teacher and as a reading specialist. In Burbank, Mrs. Griffith has worked at Miller Elementary as a first and second grade teacher and at Jefferson Elementary as a curriculum specialist. As a teacher on special assignment at the district office, she leads new teachers through the induction program. She conducts professional development at both the district and site levels. She has served as the induction coordinator overseeing the district's new elementary teachers since 2018. She is recognized for her expertise in Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures, Project GLAD, Early Literacy Gate Strategies, and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports PBIS. Mrs. Griffith holds a BA in Art History from the University of Washington, a post-bachelorette, bachelor, yeah, bachelorette, teaching credential from Pima College, and master's in early childhood with a reading endorsement from Northern Arizona University, and an administrative credential from UC Irvine. Her personal connection to the Burbank school community runs deep, with her oldest child graduating from Burbank High in 2020, her middle school child, I'm sorry, middle child currently a senior, and her youngest attending mirror before moving to Canada to play hockey. Mrs. Griffith is excited to return to Jefferson to continue building on the relationships and work that she began there. Mrs. Griffith looks forward to returning to the school site and continuing to make Jefferson the great school that it is. She is eager to join the leadership team and contribute to the success of the school and district. Congratulations, and welcome to you.
Hi, guys. Hi, Dr. Agakanyan, Board Members, District Leadership, Dr. Paramo. It's nice to see all of your faces. I'm very excited and honored to be stepping into this role, and it is a great joy for me to be going back to Jefferson, where I spent a couple of years being able to build relationships and work with Dr. Young, and continue to be with the families there. It is a true honor for me to step into this role. I'm really excited. I have loved my time at Burbank, and I am looking forward to continuing working with you all. So thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it.
Here are my colleagues. Comment. Yeah, congratulations, Ms. Griffith. Just don't go to Canada. We need you here, so. Next. Yeah, more, yes.
Mrs. Lucia Bowers, please come forward. The Burbank Unified School District is proud to announce the selection of Mrs. Lucy Bowers as a new principal at Bret Hart Elementary School. In her 18 years with BUSD, Mrs. Bowers has taught at Luther Burbank Middle School, Stevenson Elementary School, and Dolores Huerta Middle School. She later served as a teacher on special assignment at the district office, where she led the induction program for new teachers, supported district-wide professional development, and contributed as a member of the English Department Leadership Team. Most recently, she served as a Title I Coordinator at Luther Burbank Middle School. Mrs. Bowers earned her bachelor's degree in English with a minor in History from the University of California Davis. She holds both a California Single Subject Teaching Credential in English and a Multiple Subject Teaching Credential, and a Master's Degree in Teacher Leadership. Mrs. Bowers is a lifelong Burbank resident, parent, coach, and volunteer. Her husband and three children are all BUSD alumni, and as a family, they have attended four Burbank elementary schools, all three Burbank middle schools, and have four diplomas from John Burrows High School, with the fifth anticipated soon. Throughout her time with BUSD, Mrs. Bowers has led with compassion, positivity, and a deep commitment to the Burbank community and its students. She extends her heartfelt gratitude to her family, friends, and colleagues for their constant support, and is excited to lead the Bret Hart Bees with great enthusiasm. Please, please, join us in celebrating and welcoming Lucy Bowers as the new principal of Bret Hart Elementary School.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Agakanyan, Board Members, District Leadership, students, families, friends, Burbank. It is with great gratitude, deep gratitude, that I stand here before you today as the incoming principal for Bret Hart Elementary School. You might not recognize her here, but also standing in this spot is the first-grade version of me, which was a very shy, English-language-learning, socio-economically-disadvantaged, first-generation American, a student from a single-family home. That girl who began her educational journey here in Burbank at Bret Hart Elementary School roughly 40 years ago is standing here with me now. Bret Hart's vibrant, supportive environment sparked a love of learning that has stayed with me ever since, making this moment truly meaningful. I believe in leading through connection, respect, and gratitude, and so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank so many people. Thank you to my mentors, my colleagues, and friends across BUSD for making this a wonderful place to be. Thank you for making the hard work of educating our students, fulfilling, rewarding, and most of all, joyful. Your professional excellence has always inspired me to bring nothing less than my very best every single day. I hope I can rely on your expertise and support in this new journey. To my family, especially my mom and my pops, thank you for all your sacrifices to get me here. Pops, thanks for always waiting in the car after every single pop show rehearsal. I appreciate it. And Mom, thank you for teaching me to do all things con ganas, which means with the maximum effort and with enthusiasm. To my husband and my children, thank you for being the best Mr. and Mrs. Bowers and the best Mrs. Bowers's kids, even when that's not easy. I've never been a teacher without also being a parent, so this is not only a big moment for me, but for all of us in our household. To the past and present Bret Hart community, including our principals, teachers, staff, families, and students, thank you for continuing the school's legacy of excellence across the generations. To the current and future Bret Hart community, as we serve together, may we do so in honor of those who have gone before us and pass on the love that they gave to our school. I'm eager to get to know each of you. I'm eager to work collaboratively with each of you, and most of all, I'm eager to truly earn your trust. A future Bret Hart principal may be sitting in first-grade classrooms right now, and so my biggest challenge and my goal is to pass on something truly awesome for them to inherit from me. I hope that one day that future principal is just as proud to serve this exceptional school as I am today. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for the warm welcome. I truly appreciate it.
Dr. Weisberg.
I mean, I'm just so excited to have you leading Hart into this next chapter. I mean, I think we speak for all of us when I say that. And it's always ironic to me when people who are stepping into these positions say thank you to us, thank you to you. I mean, we couldn't be more excited, not just for you, but also for Emily and Jen, but that you're stepping into these roles. And the thing we keep hearing is people either coming home or having stayed here and continuing to grow with the BUSD community. coming home or having stayed here and continuing to grow with the BUSD community. So, I just couldn't think of, I can't think of a better person to be leading Bret Hart forward and just know you have a whole bunch of supporters here looking for any way we can to help you out as you move forward. Can't wait to see what you're gonna do.
Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Conno.
I congratulate this dude, but I really just want to congratulate your mom.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Pleasure. Stand up. Please stand up so we can, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Bowers, we are, I am so proud of you. We are so proud of you. Many of us share a similar story like yours. So, you are a source of inspiration. Keep up the good fight. We need more people like you. Thank you very much and congratulations. Yes. Dr. Lucia.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Agakanyan, esteemed board members, district leadership, Superintendent Dr. Paramo, and Burbank Unified Community. It is my privilege and honor to introduce our next Director of Student Services and Health Services, and that person is Narnay Barzegar. Ms. Narnay Barzegar began her career in education in the year 2000 as an educational assistant in the Glendale Unified School District. She joined Burbank Unified in 2005 as a math teacher at John Burroughs High School. During her 13 years at JBHS, Ms. Barzegar served as a beginning teacher, support and assessment mentor teacher, as a master teacher, and as a math department chair. She held positions as a teacher on special assignment at John Muir Middle School, Burbank Unified Summer School, and John Burroughs High School. For the past seven years, Ms. Barzegar has been a proud member of the Burbank High School Administrative Team, holding the positions of Assistant Principal of Student Services, Guidance and Special Education, and Curriculum and Instruction. In April of 2024, she assumed the position of principal at Burbank High School. She has earned a Bachelor of Science in Applied Mathematics from UCLA, sorry, in 2004, and a Master of Arts in Educational Administration from Cal State University in Northridge in 2013. Please join me in congratulating Narnay on her new leadership position here in Burbank Unified, which will take in effect July 1st. She will still serve out as principal of Burbank High, very important to note. So, let's congratulate Narnay.
Good evening, Board President Agakanyan, members of the board, and Burbank community. I want to thank Dr. Paramo and the district leadership team for this opportunity and your continued support over the past 20 years. During my time in BUSD, I've had the great pleasure of working with many people in this district at three different sites, John Burroughs, Burbank High, and Muir. And I now look forward to meeting, supporting, and working with all BUSD sites. It has been my honor to serve Burbank High for the past seven years, and I want to take a moment to recognize all the great people there. The classified staff, they are really the anchor of that organization, as they are at all of our sites, including the district office. Their institutional knowledge brings calm and stability to the day-to-day operations and service we offer to our families and students. The teachers and counselors are such caring and passionate professionals. They take so much pride in what they do, looking for ways to collaborate, try new things, learn from colleagues. It is no wonder that so many of our staff have their own children go through Burbank High School. It shows the level of trust and respect that we all have in the site. The classroom support staff are just good people. They get to know the students, they meet them where they're at, and support them throughout their educational journey. Our custodial team, under the leadership of Carlos, Jose, and Victor, keep the site impeccable. The WASC visiting team this year made it a point to note how clean and orderly our site is. And of course, the admin team, Rema, Jennifer, Laura, Eddie, and Mike, you are all incredible professionals, and I am truly enjoy, I have truly enjoyed working with all of you. I also want to thank the continued support of our PTSA under President Kelly Dunkel. The PTSA actively supports so many activities that would not run as smoothly as they do if it wasn't for their continued support. They always mobilize, organize, in support of our students, and we appreciate it. All of these positive messages are not unique to just Burbank High School. They are what make Burbank Unified great. These stories can be true for all of our sites. Every site and department has their team of stellar employees and community members who contribute to the continued success of our sites, departments, and BUSD as a whole. I look forward to continuing to serve the students and families of Burbank by working with all those stellar folks at each of our sites. Thank you.
Anyone?
Thank you.
I'm, it's so good to see you in this position. I think that, I don't have the words, because I'm so excited. I think it's a position that you will excel at, which makes it good for all the rest of us, so, especially for the families coming into Burbank, who, I mean, that is the first place they go to, will be your office. So, having someone like you as the backbone of that office, and you have such an amazing staff there, it'll be, it's just good. It's a good thing. So, thank you for signing up.
Thank you for trusting me.
Any of my, so, Director Barzegar, Director Principal Barzegar. I kind of echo what my colleagues said. Having been there and gone on several tours with you, I've seen how you not only deal with staff, but also students. Even when parents come there, I think you'll be a fantastic Director of Student Services. I was just looking forward, our son is soon gonna be a Bulldog, to have you as the principal. But I'm certain we will get also someone as qualified and someone with your skills. But I'm very excited about this, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Likewise. Thank you, everyone.
Dr. Paramo.
Just, I just want to take a moment and say a couple of words. When we asked you to be the principal at Burbank High, one of the things that stood out the most about you is your love for the kids there. It's just so obvious. When you go there, the way you interact with kids, the way you embrace them, the way you respect them is, means everything. It means everything to kids. I think that this position is very well-deserved. Obviously, there's a hole at Burbank High School that we'll need to fill. But what I'm excited about is that you will be able to take that same loving and caring personality of yours and expose that to all of our school sites, and I think we're gonna all benefit from that. And your level of expertise in the areas of student services are really gonna be amazing for our district, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Let's wait for all our individuals, which is Ms. Bowers, Ms. Coyne, Ms. Griffith, and of course, our new Director Barzegar. Let's hear it one more time, everyone. Dr. Lucia.
We have a new doctor in Burbank Unified, so a new doctor in the house. I don't know if anyone noticed here or in the greater community at home. Ms. Rebecca Harris was last week, as we refer to, and just recently, she successfully defended her dissertation from, sorry, people, the University of Southern California. So, Dr. Harris, please come to the podium. We want to congratulate you, well-earned recognition for completing her doctorate degree.
I don't know if you want to say a few words, or you want to come down for a picture.
Will do both. Any of my colleagues, USC graduates, go ahead. Here's your moment.
Oh, you mean me? Thank you. And you? I think there are a lot of us here who have gone through this, a similar process at the same school. It is so difficult, especially when you're working full-time, to be in school full-time, to try to schedule your life around being present for students and teachers and staff, and then also being present to learn how to be better at being present for your students, teachers, and staff. So, just, I don't know, unless you've been through it, you can really understand how difficult it is. So, I just want to celebrate you, commend you, can't wait to learn from you, and I do seriously want to read your dissertation.
Dr. Tabit. Turn around, alum from USC.
Yes, only my undergrad, though, so. I can't say I'm a doctor, but, but congratulations, and I know, coming from a program at SC, that you, I mean, even if you hadn't, I think you're a hugely qualified human being to do almost anything you put your mind to. The first time I met you, when you were principal at Disney, and I walked into your office and we had a conversation for a good hour, there was just something about you that I just wanted to be around you. And I thought, God, these lucky kids who get to have you as a principal every day. But now, here you are, Dr. Harris, in a position where you're getting to affect 10,000 students every day, give or take, a few, you know? And that means a lot to me here in our school district, so, fight on, bring on the fight. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Kamkar.
Thank you, Dr. Agakanyan. Dr. Harris, as you, I would like to say that I'm the president of your fan club, but I think we both know that that's my daughter. It is aggressive, but just congratulations. What was your dissertation on?
I just wanted to know. I looked at principles and self-care practices for retention in the role.
Excellent. That was a trick, I remembered you vaguely telling me that, so I hope that you are practicing what you researched, because this is a job that's easy to, ignore that part of yourself. And so, we are so lucky to have you, and we will be lucky to have you for a very long time. Because I don't want to have to explain to Margot if you leave us, so, congratulations.
Yes. Board Member Conno, congratulations.
Dr. Harris, congratulations. I'm just, just to see you, the role model you are, is amazing, so, from one Trojan to another.
One Trojan too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you. You caught me by complete surprise.
So, I will finish, and so Vice President Kamkar, you, for 1999 or 9995, you too can have a dissertation in print or hard copy if you want. See, you know what I'm talking about. I do agree with Dr. Weisberg, going to what you're going to. I'm sure repeating your dissertation topic was very difficult, because I'm sure you've repeated it 2 million times by now, going and defending it. But I do want to also, you know, kind of follow up on my colleague said, first time we met at Edison, Disney, I'm sorry, Edison, Disney, sorry. You know, I was, I was certain that you are going to be a wonderful leader in our community, but also, you know, we were talking about the doctoral. I did bring you some Armenian sweets, but now I gotta bring you back more Armenian sweets, as promised for congratulatory purposes. But we're so proud of you and proud of all of our administration and all the people who went to and got their doctoral. USC doesn't matter, you know, my wife, my wife went to SC, you know? Thank you. But at the same time, I think it's important for all the, you know, soon-to-be doctors who are, you know, are struggling parents, it's difficult being a parent. People don't understand, like, I spent so much time in 405 when I was getting my doctoral at Pepperdine, because people thought I was actually going to the campus. I only set foot on Pepperdine campus one time for my graduation, because their doctoral programs off the 405. I literally spent four hours a day on the freeway doing my homework, and all of you, I'm, yes, but don't tell that to the Highway Patrol, you know, but, well, sorry. No, because it doesn't move, 405, it's a joke, but 405 traffic, you know? But for all of you out there who want to do this, I think the, once you get in there, once you really realize, you know, what it takes, but also, once you're at that level of thinking, where you're a critical thinker, I always tell my scholars, students, when the blinders come off, you start seeing everything in a holistic way. And I think it's important, and I'm proud of you and all of our admin teachers and everyone who it's either gone to the process or is going to the process. It's not easy, but we're very proud of you, and congratulations, Dr. Harris. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Lucia.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call to the podium Ms. Peggy Flynn, our Director of Arts and Career Technical Education. She will facilitate our presentation of our Skills USA programs at our both high schools.
Good evening, President Agakanyan. Where'd he go? Superintendent Paramo, he's taking a photo off. Oh, thank you. I'm going to be very brief, because I want the people who matter most to be able to talk to you tonight and tell you what, what this is all about, but just as a synopsis for people who may not know, Burbank Unified offers a comprehensive career technical education program, award-winning in almost all of our offerings. We have 12 pathways that represent eight industry sectors that have been projected to be high-growth, high-wage in the next five to 10 years. And several of our programs are affiliated with what we call CTSOs, which is a CTE student organization. So, NAF Academy, the National Academy Foundation is an example of a CTSO. Also, Skills USA is a CTSO. Different CTOs offer programs in different pathways. So, if anyone's wondering, then why are we NAF and Skills USA? That's why. It's a very important part of our CTE programming. It offers students avenues to develop leadership, teamwork, technical skills through competitions, and community service projects. The organization offers emphasis on hands-on learning and real-world application. Before I get into too deep of detail with that, I'd like to bring up to the podium our fearless coaches. Our, our coaches for Skills USA are really exceptional. They don't have to give up their time with this. They, they have minimal compensation to do it and spend a tremendous amount of time, and the pride they have for their kids is just outstanding. I want to acknowledge Allison Edge, who has been our NAF director for several years, and she has really led the charge recently with making sure that the students and the teachers are able to handle all the logistics of going to the competition. teachers are able to handle all the logistics of going to the competitions and, and getting information and making sure all is going and running well. So I want to thank her, she couldn't be here tonight. The first teacher that I would like to call up, but he was not able to join us tonight, was Mr. Matthew McDermott. He's from Burbank High School. He is the coach for the entrepreneurship team out of Burbank High. The next one I'd like to call up is Mr. Dave Vesna.[626.16][626.16](applause) Mr. Vesna leads the engineering team from John Burrows High School. Do you want to call your kids up?
Sure.
This is for you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, board members and esteemed colleagues. Yeah, I'm Dave Vesna, I teach at John Burrows High School, I taught there for 21 years, and I'm happy to be part of Skills USA, and thank you so much for your support for our students in supporting Skills. It's, it's an amazing event that, that takes place. And so I'd like to honor my students right now, call them up, just one at a time. First, I'll call up Luca Diaz.
Luca, please come on up.[681.13][681.13](applause)
And my students competed in the urban search and rescue robotics in Skills USA. So they, we have many competitions, as you'll hear them all, but that's what I, we competed in, my students did. Next, I'd like to call up Kai Browning. And then one more student I'd like to call up is Mateo Salas.[712.69][712.69](applause) So, thank you very much, and once again, thank you for supporting Skills USA. And we'll call up the next advisor, I'm not sure who that's going to be, but.
I think.
Just before you leave, can you just describe to our viewers what robotics?
So, the, the robotics search and rescue, the competition is to simulate a robot that would go into an urban environment and remove an explosive device, like it's a bomb squad. And what they have to do is they have to drive the robot remotely and also kind of in the blind, they have to use a GoPro or a camera on there, so they can't see where they're, you know, they can't look at the robot, they have to just use it with their monitor. And they, they're timed, they have to do it within six minutes, and they have to remove three of the, the fake ordinances when they do the competition. So, it's very, very competitive. At the state level, there's maybe 30 different teams from all over California, and they are extremely competitive, but.
And the same application be applied to a 13-year-old's room to go in there?[790.13][790.13](laughter)
Watch it, don't step on the Legos, yes.[793.13][793.13](laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.[797.13][797.13](applause) Yeah, we can do pictures and videos, you want to see them next?
I would like, I, we were trying to keep it brief, but I'd like to bring up Mrs. Sandra Macias, who coached, who is the coach of our culinary arts team from Burrows.
Good evening. There's actually two competitions that fall under the culinary arts pathway. There's the culinary program, or I'm sorry, competition, and then there's also baking and pastries. So unfortunately, many of my students couldn't make it, but I do have a student here, Bluzette Bluzette placed fourth at regionals for the baking and pastry. Unfortunately, they did not take many students and promote them up to state. Normally, they have at least four or five that promote up to state, so this year, I don't know why they did not do that. But Bluzette should have gone, she did very well, so. So thank you again for supporting our career technical education programs.
Just, can you read the names of the people who are not here? For the million of the viewers are watching this.
Yes, okay, so another, we did have a silver medalist at regionals, her name is Olivia Dominguez. And then Valerie Linda, who is also the president of our Epicurean Society, which is the fundraising arm of our class, our advanced classroom. She was there. And then Nolan Mendez, not Mendez, sorry.
Mendoza.
Mendoza, excuse me, Nolan Mendoza, he participated in the culinary arts.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.[923.63][923.63](applause)
I was lucky enough to go on a trip with Mrs. Macias's kids to an organic farm the other day, and it was really incredible. The other piece she didn't share with you is, a part of their programming is philanthropic, and they're asked to give back to the community. And the, the team at Burrows worked on dress for the prom, and so they use their skills to give back to the community, it's not just about competition. Our next group is our medical health science team from Burbank High School, and I'd like to introduce Irene Mobse- oh, I knew it, he named, he said Mr. M, but I said, no, I need to say your name, Mobsefian.[978.32][978.32](applause)
Good evening, Mr. Mobsefian. District leaders, I want to start with contradicting Ms. Peggy Flynn, I am not the coach, I'm their secretary. I file the paperwork, I answer emails, the magic happens with them. This year, we had eight people qualify for state out of 14. Unfortunately, most of them couldn't be here because of APs, sports, and virus. They did an amazing job, we made it to state with four gold, first place, and one silver. So that's, again, it's an amazing accomplishment. I can't even begin to describe what they do, so next April, please, take the time, come down to Ontario and see for yourself the competition they face, Burbank and Burrows. It's, it's amazing, the fact that they even got that far, so well done. So let me go ahead and introduce them, one by one. Okay, we'll multitask. I think we're good. David Organesian.[1057.32][1057.32](applause) And would you like me to read the other names? Okay. Olivia Bauer. Annalyn Luca. Rachel Diaz.[1071.63][1071.63](applause) She got two of them. Gynam Gertian.[1083.01][1083.01](applause) Artim Matosian.[1086.13][1086.13](applause) Chloe Keshishian.[1089.25][1089.25](applause) And Lily Andreasian.[1092.32][1092.32](applause) And that was both business and medical. Yes, thank you.
Please, please let us know when these competitions happen, because if we can make it, we, we will do.
It's usually the first week of April, so we'll definitely, I will definitely.
Because Mr. Mendez did, and I drove down and watched the design-build contest.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I'm.
We're right across the street, so.
Well, I also think it could be amazing to see video and/or images. I know you're trying to be respectful and keep it short, but like, this is an opportunity to really celebrate, so for those of us who can't necessarily get down there when they really want to be, I would still love to be able to hear more about what you guys did to earn these amazing awards and to hear more about all the other categories. So however we can figure that out, just also give the community a chance to hear a little bit more about the amazing work being done, I think would be fantastic.
We actually discussed that in our advisory board meeting yesterday and our CTE teacher meeting about how we are going to let the community know.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I think it'd be great if we get a video and something, and then some also baked goodies from the culinary team. I do also want to acknowledge that one of these honorees, Melania, is also the daughter of our own math teacher from Burbank High School, Ms. Akopian, who was also voted Teacher of the Year by the Armenian genocide product, project, and congratulations, and congratulations to both of you, so.[1187.07][1187.07](applause)
And Mr. Mobsefian, thank you for your time, too.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of extra time and energy on your part, and it's appreciated.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Cara Clark. She represents the, the team from John Burrows in photography.[1207.82][1207.82](applause)
Hello, thank you for having us. I had two students who competed in photography this year, and then a student who completed, competed also in pin design, so that was an exciting new category for us. My students, they work really hard, and I had three total, I have one student who's here, so I'd like to acknowledge Lily Johnson, if she could come up for me, please?[1233.51][1233.51](applause)
Wasn't Lily our top scorer for the Adobe?
She was our top scorer for our Adobe certification this year, yes she was.[1245.82][1245.82](laughter) So we'll say that, too. And then we had Cara Lepley and Paloma Deng.[1251.63][1251.63](applause) Congratulations.
Hey, Dr. Weisberg, you want to do the Adobe thing?
Oh, here, here. Oh, thank you. We, we've been working for 10 years to, one of our goals in CTE and for our grants is to have professional certifications in each of our pathways, and it's taken 10 years to get to the point where we finally are able to conduct the tests in our classroom, and we've had a really great success rate, our teachers have just done extremely well, and our kids are amazing. These, these are not student exams, these are professional, industry-recognized exams, and they've, or certifications, and they're getting them, so I'm very proud of all of them. And last, but definitely not least, Gerard Mendez from John Burrows High School.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here. So this year, we had design build, which all my kids that did Skills USA, they competed in design build, which was a two-day competition where they built a shed, and then we have three categories.[1331.13][1331.13](laughter) We had three categories that we competed this year, we did cabinet-making, intro to woodworking, and then carpentry. First, I want to bring up Mackenzie Morris, she got first in carpentry and cabinet-making for regionals, and she went to state.[1348.01][1348.01](applause) Then we have Callie Brooks, she competed at regionals and at state as well.[1355.01][1355.01](applause) Then we have Ian Campbell, he got third place at regionals and made it to state.[1373.48][1373.48](applause) Then we have Canaan, he got second at regionals and second at state.[1399.01][1399.01](applause) So Canaan got second at regionals and then second at state, he got his silver medal at state. And then we have Murphy, competed in carpentry, got first at regionals and fourth at state.[1417.01][1417.01](applause) And thank you once again, without all your support, we wouldn't be able to have these competitions, be able to travel and have the experience the kids have to build and go actually use it, what they learned in the classroom, out in the real world and compete. Thank you.[1436.13][1436.13](applause)
Miss, Mr. Mendez, miss.
Yeah, we got to. Comments, and we got to do a group photo, so don't leave.
Mrs. Flynn, Peggy.
Mr. Mendez, turn around.[1454.32][1454.32](laughter)
Then we got to do one big group photo, don't leave.[1459.32][1459.32](laughter)
Mr. Mendez was the Masonic Teacher of the Year for high school. Did high school that well.
No way.[1468.32][1468.32](applause)
We have some other very honorable honors.
Are you related to Christopher Luna?
No.
Mr. Mendez, didn't you win something as a, as director, coach?
Safety.
Which is important.
Safety instructor of the year for the design build competition.
You never told me.[1487.63][1487.63](applause)
I'm, I'm ratting him out, he's too modest.[1491.32][1491.32](applause)
And then everybody has their, they got their OSHA-10 certification, they have their card for their OSHA-10.
Oh, wow, that's nice.
Also, do you want to come up quickly, we have Joshua Christensen from our carpenters' union here, works closely with the program, you want to, also, we have a partnership, Christian, why don't you come up and quickly tell us what you do?
Yay!
Josh, come on up.[1512.51][1512.51](applause)
So, again, my name is Joshua Christensen, I'm with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, representing 90,000 men and women in the carpenter scopes of work. We build bridges, we build hospitals, we build schools, we're excited to build Burbank Unified School District schools and improve them, and we're excited for these awesome carpenters here, and future carpenters, and whatever they choose to do, and we're excited for their, their competition skills, that they participated and did really well, represented Burbank with professionalism, and it put, put them again on the map once again, so we're excited for them, and again, congratulate them.[1555.91][1555.91](applause)
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christensen, and all of our sisters and brothers from the union. Yes, Dr. Macia.
Would like to share with the community a video from the design build competition that I'd like to play right now.
I joined this class when I was a sophomore in high school, and at first it was just a woodworking class, and I fell in love with being able to do a lot of hands-on work with wood and with different machines. And then my junior year, it turned into more of a construction-sided class, which was
Last year was my first year doing design build, it was our first year at school, and it taught me a lot about construction on-site and with a team, and knowing what we know from last year, we're able to do it a lot better this year.[1614.32][1614.32](music)
I've been a part of two competitions overall so far. My first was last year, where I participated in the 2024 Design Build Competition, and my second was Skills USA Individual Competition, which I competed in about a month ago now, and won first place for my region.[1635.82][1635.82](music)
I wanted the kids to have more real-life experiences with building. We use a career connection curriculum, we build stuff in the classroom, but I want to take it a little further, have the kids actually go and compete and build something on-site, like if you were, if you were in the real world.[1655.48][1655.48](music)
This year, design build takes place in April, and we're more prepared than ever. We know what to expect, and we really want to win Rookie of the Year this year. This year, we're going to be a lot more organized and really tackle this project. We're going to split off into teams that take on different tasks for our design build, construction, shed.
This year, I'm the safety manager, so I'm standing more on the sidelines, making sure no one dies or hurts themselves, or steps on a rusty nail. Mr. Mendez has been a great mentor, helping me through my three years in his class, and giving me the opportunity to do design build for two years and Skills USA this year as well.
Our team is feeling fairly confident, we've been practicing and working for a while now. We saw our first design build team do very well. This attracted sponsorships from Swinerton, who were thankful enough to bring us new equipment and a lot of assistance with the build process, and this has really helped us, as it's given us a lot more opportunities to practice with their supply of a lot more materials, and also allowed us to have more of a safe environment for the job site because of these new innovative tools and safety equipment that we did not have last year.[1739.41][1739.41](music)
This year, we have 15 kids competing, 10 boys, five girls. They've been working, coming in during lunchtime, practicing their hammering skills, their measuring skills, cutting skills, which it's a real skill level to have right after high school. Since I started using the curriculum, I have gotten more support from the, from the district, from the school, gone to board meetings, they recognize my accomplishments, having kids going to nationals, winning first place in state, and then winning awards in the
Yep, real quick, just one last statement I'd really want to emphasize is that these students represent a lot of our diverse students, and access to these And access to these specialized courses, which means the support is coming from our board, our district, in maintaining career technical education programs. That is something that I really want to highlight to the greater community because Burbank Unified is doing really well in career tech education. Picture time.
Oh, you get in front of me. I'm in the back. You need to be in the front because you're right here. We lost them. They have to go home.
And everyone over there?
We... Who's in the back?
Congratulations, everyone.
Just quickly, I want you to know there are 1,600 students in our CTE programs. And helping us coordinate all that between the schools and the community colleges, which is a very important relationship, is Diana Deistey, our CTE counselor. So I want to say thank you to her as well.
While everybody gets moving on, I know we're going to be on student rep report soon. Who do you want to do first? Rose, do you want to go first? You look like you're ready. All right. We'll have Rose Giesen from Burbank High School.
Okay, everyone, we have student reports. But Rose, before you also start, I also want to make sure that our students who are just honored... You can always ask for letters of recommendation from the district or also if the board wants to. I get it all the time. It does help for your career as well. We're always available for you if you ever need a letter of recommendation for any of us. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening Superintendent Paramo, esteemed board members, President Dr. Aga Khanian, Vice President Kamkar, Board Clerk Tabet, Board Members Weisberg and Cano, and all established guests this evening. I'm honored to provide updates on the advancements at Burbank High School for the very last time. Tomorrow, the Burbank vs. Burrows baseball game will take place at BHS at 6:30 p.m. AP testing begins next week, and we extend our best wishes to our students for success on these exams. This week, our ASB hosted a spirit week featuring themes such as Anything But a Backpack Day, Rhyme Without Reason, Decades Day, College Decisions Day, and this upcoming tomorrow, actually, is music genres theme with related to rally planned for tomorrow as well. ASB is also hosting Senior Sunset, scheduled for May 16, along with Grad Night next Friday. The Burbank High School Instrumental Music Department will host a pop concert titled A Night in the Movies tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. and Saturday at 6:00 p.m. Additionally, a pop show, Sound Off, featuring Bloom Impressions and NSYNC will be held on May 16. And that's all from BHS. I thank you for your time this evening. Are there any questions?
So for my colleagues, do we want to do the... Because this is the last meeting for our representatives. Do you want to wait till the end and make the comments? Or you want to do it individual? All right, so we will do it at the end. You're not leaving yet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Kamkar, you started.
Just trying to keep us moving. Hi, do you want to go next?
You did not say hi. She said Haik.
Good evening, Board President Aga Khanian, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and our audience. Today, I'd like to highlight some incredible achievements from Monterey High School. This has truly been a year of record-breaking success for our students. We have seen more students than ever before securing scholarships, completing their financial aid applications early, and taking proactive steps towards their futures. Thanks to their determination and hard work, we are thrilled to award the Rotary Monterey High School Scholarship to Michelle Grounds and Natalie Safarians, who will each receive $500 in recognition of their excellence. Additionally, we congratulate Dylan Salsedo, who is receiving his second scholarship, a $1,000 reward through the Rotary Woodburn Engineering Scholarship. Beyond scholarships, we're also celebrating the record number of students who have already applied to community college. This achievement would not have been possible without the tireless support and dedication of Ms. Shraga. Her diligence and unwavering commitment to guiding students through financial aid and college applications have made a lasting impact. She has truly been the shining star of Monterey High, and we owe her a great debt of gratitude. Speaking of shining stars, this year, we proudly recognize Ms. Reeves as our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Reeves has dedicated 30 years of her life to Monterey, shaping the minds and futures of many students. As she prepares to retire, we express our deepest appreciation for her passion, wisdom, and the legacy that she leaves behind. Finally, we would like to extend the heartfelt invitation to each of you to join us for our graduation ceremony on May 23rd. It will be a joyous occasion as we celebrate the accomplishments of our students and the bright futures ahead of them. Thank you for your continued support of Monterey High School and its students. Your commitment to education makes all of these achievements possible, and we are grateful for your dedication. Any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you.
Of course.
Vice President Kamkar.
Lala, are you ready?
Good evening, President Aga Khanian, distinguished board members, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. It's an honor to share my report with you tonight. On Monday, ASB hosted our Powder Puff Game, which brought lots of school spirit and excitement. On Tuesday, we held our teacher and staff appreciation luncheon, where we served delicious Italian food and showed our gratitude to the amazing people who support us every day. With Teacher Appreciation Week approaching, I also want to take a moment to personally thank all of the incredible teachers in the Burbank Unified School District. I remember attending one of my first board meetings here, where someone spoke about their most influential teachers. I started thinking about all of the amazing teachers I've had, and it was honestly hard to choose just one, which really shows how great the Burbank Unified School District is. In recognition of the Armenian genocide, the Armenian Club, in partnership with ASB, organized a week of culturally enriching and impactful events. These included t-shirt sales, educational presentations, and traditional Armenian dancing in the quad, giving students the opportunity to learn, reflect, and engage with Armenian history and heritage. In sports news, I'm proud to announce that our boys volleyball team has been crowned Pacific League champions. For seniors, ASB is busy planning our senior brunch, which will be held on May 13th. It's a special but emotional time as we begin to say goodbye to people we've spent so many years with. We're also really looking forward to prom, which is coming up this Saturday. Additionally, as college decision season wraps up, our college peer mentors have been hard at work hosting College Week. Events included Roastery Rejections, Donuts for Decisions, and Festive College Tailgate, featuring root beer floats, making the season both informative and enjoyable. Finally, last week, ASB hosted our final blood drive of the year, collecting enough donations to help save a total of 129 lives. We're incredibly proud of the students, staff, and community members who participated and supported this lifesaving initiative. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions or clarifications?
I just want to... What's the theme for your prom?
It's A Night in the Rowing Twenties.
What about you guys?
What about... Thank you. What's your theme? Yours is Gatsby? Oh, the same thing? We have twenties and Gatsby?
It's not the same thing. We're the twenties.
They're different schools. It's a different theme.
No eighties theme? So Dr. Paramo, I believe we have recognitions and certificates. So if we can have our representatives... Dr. Paramo, why don't you... If we can have representatives come to the podium, we have some certificates. And we also want to share some words of gratitude. I'm not reading the script. Hold on. All right, this time, I'd like to invite our student board members to the podium. That's what I said. In a different word. John, why don't you read that part of it? Because I have separate comments on top of it. Or you want me to read it? All right. "We're incredibly grateful for your dedication and thoughtful input and the student voices you bring to our board. Thank you for your service and leadership." But I think I also want to add a little more to it. Thank... Well, you asked me to follow the script, so no, never mind. I'm sorry. She's a teacher. I have to... It's an automatic order. I have to listen to her, so... I know that we have some certificates that we will be recognizing. How many of you are... All of you graduating, by the way? Not all of you. Okay. No, no. Lala, you're still here? Lala is graduating? Okay. So this is just a small token of appreciation for all your hard work. I know it's difficult, you know, all the stuff you do already, and then coming here, and then, you know, listening to us for a couple of hours, and then, you know... But also, I understand that it takes a lot of dedication, but also leadership. So you are the future. We're very proud of you. I just want to say, every year, I say the same thing, but, you know, we're here for you. It's... Every year is different. Every year is special. Every year, I see a brighter future for our community and for our country. So keep up what you're doing. Just so you know that we're here for you. As I said again, if you need letters, calls, let us know. Let us know which career you want to go to. We're going to do the certificates. But also, I want to take this opportunity to also thank your parents because it's difficult for, you know, you being here late at night. I know Mrs. Giesen is always here with that quiet puppy you have there. What a good dog. But again, thank you to the parents also, you know, for your understanding. What the students bring to the board and the community is priceless. So thank you for all you've done and all you do. And we look forward to hearing more about your stories, your success stories, and we'll always be here for you. Congratulations.
I think I can go off-script. I am... This is a proud superintendent moment for me. It is absolutely amazing for me as a longtime educator, as a person in high school who was in ASB all four years and a student leader. You have no idea how proud I feel and the board feels and the rest of us feel when you come up here and with so much grace and so much articulation in terms of how you speak and present yourself. It's just absolutely amazing, and it makes us all feel proud. And I am telling you, and this is the absolute truth, the best part of the board meeting is your report. It is the funnest part. And I know the board has talked about this with me all the time. And your presence is so appreciated and so valued. And I just want to say thank you. And if you ever need anything, you know how to reach us.
My colleagues. All right, let's go for a photo, everyone. Yes, thank you, my colleague. Also, we have Haik's mom here has also been here. What's your mom's name again? Kanarik. Oh, that's my aunt's name, Kanarik. How are you? No, it's a very nice name. Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here, and all the parents. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. All right, 9B, our BTA and CSEA and BASA. Do we have any of our representatives? Okay. Who do we have representing BASA? Ms. Laura Flossy. Ms. Flossy. Good evening. How are you?
Hi. Hello, Dr. Aga Khanian and our outstanding board members. Good evening, Dr. Paramo, and hello to all of our BUSD community and partners. My name is Laura Flossy, and while I'm the Director of Childcare Programs, I'm here today as the co-president of BASA, which stands for the Burbank Association of School Administrators. We are not a union, but an independent association working in conjunction with the superintendent, certified, and classified employees and other associations and groups. We are part of a bigger group, AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators. First, I'm happy to recognize that one of our members that received a big honor last week, Susie Dunn, our Operations Coordinator in the Food Services Department, was honored by AXA with a Charter Leadership Award. This award goes to one member who demonstrates active membership and commitment to AXA, a member who goes above and beyond that of just paying membership dues. But rather, they promote and create awareness of AXA, its mission, and its membership. For this, BASA and AXA are both very grateful for Susie and her dedication. And it was at the Castaways last week. Next, on National Principals' Day, BASA sends a hearty thank you to all of our principals that work so hard at all their school sites each and every day. And I'm also proud that many of our BASA members that have recently been promoted from within. Starting new leadership positions this next school year, we recognize Tracy Shaw as the Principal of Disney Elementary, Narnia Barzagar as the Director of Student Services. And we also give a warm welcome to our newest BASA members coming on board, Jen Griffith, Emily Coyne, and Lucia Bowers. It is truly inspiring to witness so many of our employees stepping up as leaders within our district. Their dedication and hard work are making a significant impact, and we couldn't be prouder of their achievements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flossy. Any questions for my colleagues? Yes.
Yay, finally.
Finally, BASA. Thank you very much. All right, now moving on to 10. Request to address the board. Oh, Superintendent... Oh, report. I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Paramo.
Thank you so much. I'd like... I have a couple of things I want to talk about. Before I do that, I'd like to invite Dr. Mercias to the podium. He has a message for our principals today.
Good evening, once again. Ms. Flossy already mentioned that today is National School Principals' Day. So we do want to... Ms. Flossy already mentioned that today is National School Principals' Day, so we do want to acknowledge that, and I do have a statement here to read. The Board of Education, Burbank Unified School District Leadership Team, and the entire Burbank community would like to take this opportunity on National Schools Principals' Day to express our sincere gratitude for all our BUSD principals. We appreciate their leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to our students and schools. Their vision, guidance, and passion for education are instrumental in fostering a thriving learning environment. Our BUSD principals are the heart and soul of our schools, managing a vast array of responsibilities with grace and effectiveness. From supporting teachers and students to navigating administrative challenges and building strong community partnerships, their efforts are invaluable. We recognize their tireless, tireless work in creating a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment where every child can reach their full potential. Their leadership inspires our students, motivates our staff, and strengthens our school communities. Their commitment to academic excellence and the well-being of our students is deeply appreciated. We are grateful for the positive impact they have on all our students, all our teachers, support staff, and the entire Burbank Unified School District community. We have amazing elementary teacher, uh, principals, middle school principals, high school principals, one alternative education principal, and a Burbank Adult School principal. They are all exceptional. Thank you for everything you do, school principals.
Let's hear it for the principals. Dr. Paramo.
Yes, sir, thank you. I see a lot of John Burrows High School, uh, red polos, uh, makes me feel good. Uh, reminds me of my time at Burrows, I think I've spent at least ten years there. Welcome. Uh, I am told by our clerk that you want to speak about trainers. Uh, I just want to say a couple of things about that. One is, you're always welcome at a board meeting. You can always email or call me, and come to my office, and any issue you have, we can always talk about. It doesn't have to be at a board meeting. Um, I know how valuable trainers are. Uh, it's really difficult when you're in a budget crisis to be able to afford all the things that we want. Um, we had an amazing contract probably ten years ago with the Glendale Adventists, and we were with that organization for many years until they could, they could not afford that program any longer. Thankfully, we were able to make a connection with Saint Joe's, and we were with Saint Joe's for a long time, them supporting us. And when I say support, what I'm, what I'm trying to express to you is that they helped to fund the trainers to be able to work with our kids. Because everybody's in financial crisis, they ended their program. So now, for me to fully fund the program the way it is, is hundreds of thousands of dollars that I don't have in a budget crisis. However, knowing how important this is, we were able to find a way to be able to support three trainers this semester, three. One for Burbank, one for Burrows, and Mr. Isaiah Knoll, who was supposed to help out at both schools. I don't know the reason, but only Burbank High is taking advantage of Mr. Isaiah Knoll. I don't know why Bur, Burrows is not taking advantage of him, because the intention was that he was supposed to split his time to be able to support the schools with all programs. Currently, the way this is structured is that we are hiring trainers on a consultant agreement, a semester at a time. So there was a consultant agreement for all three trainers, starting in early January, that will end at the end of spring semester. I have every intention of renewing that. We can renew that same consultant agreement in the fall, so that we can maintain these, the same three people. Now, when it comes to summer, that would have to be a separate consultant agreement, and under normal circumstances, we could figure out what the need is and what we can afford and address that. This summer is unprecedented. Our facilities are not available to our community because of the fact that we are changing all the roofs. So it doesn't make sense to me that I'm going to hire three trainers during the summer when there's no facility to be able to facilitate practices or anything else. But you have my commitment, I know how important it is, and, and to the extent that we can continue to fund that, it is on the top of my priority list. There, I have not mentioned or signaled to anyone that that was going to end, because I don't intend to end it. So I just want you to know my perspective. If, if I answered your questions and, and you want to go home, that's great. If not, I look forward to hearing from you at the podium. Uh, also, want to recognize, I think there are a couple Roosevelt parents, I'm not sure. Uh, I sent out a new message, uh, later, uh, in the afternoon. Uh, I would love to hear what you have to say. Uh, I just want to give you a couple data points that, um, were not expected. This year, we had forty requests from students whose homeschool is Huerta to go to Luther. We've never had that many. We've never had forty. We haven't had anywhere near forty. That's not something that myself or district staff could anticipate. Uh, it's never been that, and so that's really hard. It's not a data point that I can check over the course of five years and longitudinally try to figure out that it's going to be ten, or it's going to be fifteen. This is unprecedented, so I couldn't, I couldn't anticipate that at all. I will also tell you that, um, I've been in the district office for ten years. I am one of the key people involved in projecting enrollment. Having done this for ten years, I think we're pretty good. I think our, our staff does a really good job. With so much going on in the world right now, with immigration, with declining enrollment, all these outside factors, all of the projections we've, and all the mechanisms we've used to project enrollment, is not always accurate right now. I was at a five-star meeting with the superintendents from South Pass, Pasadena, La Cañada, and we were all having the same discussion. Superintendent from South Pass said, "I have never been so far off in my Kinder projections." I'm experiencing the same thing. We, we projected Dolores Huerta to be at nine hundred and ten students, using all the mechanisms and using all the data points that we've always used, and they have come in sixty students short. That's a lot. That is a lot. That means that we have to go back and look at their staffing and probably reduce by two. Now, if I allow the forty kids that want to go to Luther, that's an additional three teachers. So that means that Huerta would lose five teachers. Now, in all honesty, if this could be teachers that I get to select, then it might be an easier go, right? But these aren't going to be an English teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, a social studies teacher. Why? Because all kids take those classes, it's a state requirement. Those aren't the teachers that are going to go. The teachers that are going to let, be let go are the art teacher, the music teacher, the culinary arts teacher, the engineering teacher. And that's all the stuff the kids love, and it's so important to their development. I am in, our district is in the middle of working through the added district permits. So we're processing those, we're figuring out who's eligible to come in from out of district, because there are certain requirements, and we are going through that and trying to get them placed as quickly as possible. I'm just making up numbers off the top of my head. If we get forty kids from the outside that want to come in to middle school, and we offer them Huerta, and they can go to Huerta, and they're happy to go to Huerta, then I have a lot of room to be able to move kids to Luther. But I'm not going to know that until I go through the process. I'm trying to do it as quickly as possible. Uh, we did the, um, interest first, we're doing the interest now, because there were different deadlines. It'll probably take at least two or three weeks for us to get everything placed, and I promise to get back to the community as soon as possible. I know how important this is. Uh, I've, I've had so many amazing emails that were very respectful, uh, but concerned. Parents are concerned, they don't want to disappoint their child. I don't want to disappoint your child either. So I am working closely with the board, I've had multiple conversations with these five people, one at a time, because of Brown Act rules, to explain what the situation is, and to explain to them what the process is and what we're trying to do to make sure that we can, um, do our best to accommodate all your families. Please, I'm not, I'm not trying to keep you from the podium, I just wanted to be able to say some overarching comments, so that when you come forward, you can at least have a context, and I'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo. All right. Now we are at ten, request to address the board. This is the ten eighth section, public communication on agenda items and on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board by completing a white card, a request card, and turn it to Ms. Quintero. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than ten minute, uh, five minutes, sorry, I just doubled that. Five minutes, people, sorry. Uh, maybe, sorry, alluded to each speaker, well, it used to be ten minutes. Except by unanimous consent of, no, it was never, okay, I was trying to be funny, thank you. Consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department to review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person, um, advance, advance for viewing and participating. So we do, do we have a virtual speaker? No, not today, all right. So, again, as superintendents said earlier, if you're still wanting to come and speak about the topic, you're more than welcome. Um, my first card is Aaron Figueroa. Aaron? And if you don't want to, you can say it's okay.
Hi, I'm Juan Carlos Barrera, but I'm speaking on behalf of John Burrows. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Paramo and staff. First, I'd like to say thank you for addressing our concerns, you know, I appreciate that. You can answer to all of our questions, and we appreciate you saying that, you know, having athletic trainers is on one of your, um, priority lists. So we just want to make sure, because Ms. she's like, you know, um, she's a lot to the program. She helps us a lot, you know? So it just mean, it'd mean a lot, you know, if you really like to care of that. But we really appreciate you, uh, taking that into concern, you know, on behalf of John Burrows. But that was basically it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your day.
So I don't know what, what the group is, if I call your name, you're part of that, you don't have to come up. We have Juan Carlos. Oh, sorry. Aaron Figueroa, Juan Carlos, now we have Joshua Oroso, Oroso. You're good, all right. Callie Sellers. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Callie Sellers, and I'm a fifth grader at Roosevelt Elementary School. I am one of the many who got denied to transfer to Luther Middle School. I feel that it is unfair for all of us who got rejected. Here are some of my reasons why you should reconsider. My friends and I were led to believe by school staff and administration that it was going to be no problem transferring to Luther. Having thought that it was going to be no issue transferring, I attended all of the Luther events for incoming sixth graders, such as orientation, family night, and I even ran the marathon there called Run the Halls. Attending any Huerta middle school events never crossed my mind, because I had my mindset on Luther. Therefore, I missed them all, and I know nothing about the school unlike Luther. Throughout my elementary school years at Roosevelt, I have built many strong relationships with friends and their parents, that I consider them family. I find it very unfair that my elementary school gets to split up into two different middle schools. I really hope you reconsider the transfer for my friends and I, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Katerina Severse, that's, okay. Jeremy, that's good? Thank you. I think, was that all, no, there's more. We're going in order. Okay, you know what, let me prioritize, hold on one. Yeah, let's go, Jeremy, you go now, you're, are you a student, Jeremy, at Burrows High School?
No.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you.
My name is Jeremy Fiskus, my daughter Sophia is currently a fifth grader. She was one of the girls up here. I came here to discuss the intra-district permit as well. You did answer many questions with your email earlier, um, as well as your statement just a few minutes ago. Um, I'll try to edit this in my head as I'm reading, so it's shorter. I currently am not confident that I've been given enough information to explain the difference between this year and previous years. While we've been told the process for intra-district permits has not changed, the results clearly have. With Roosevelt being one of the few elementary schools that has split between middle school zones, one common conversation among many past and present Roosevelt families, as well as school staff over the years, is that as long as you fill out the proper forms and submit them on time, then you'll get into the school of choice. For all the people who share that common thought, through the six years of Roosevelt, we never came across anyone who warned us of the risk that we could be denied. I understand that is anecdotal, but I believe it fairly represents recent history and demonstrates how confident families felt about enrolling into Luther through the intra-district permit, which was our intention with Sophia since kindergarten. This is also, in my opinion, about Burbank's general sense of community, especially relating to families and the well-being of our children. Not only our community that separates us from the surrounding Los Angeles area, but also our distinct neighborhoods within Burbank. For the twelve years that we've lived at our current address, Luther was always considered part of our neighborhood more than Huerta ever was. It was always going to be our first choice, and through six years at Roosevelt, we were never given a reason to believe our enrollment would be at risk. And yet, this year, obviously, um, pretty much all students, even those with siblings or IEPs, at least at this point, have been denied. All information I have at this point, other than what you've also expressed, points to this being unprecedented, which I appreciate you also using that word as well. Uh, no prior notice was given about this change. If the process has been the same this whole time, parents had no reason to believe that the results would be so dramatically different. We were already following through with our own process of transitioning to Luther by visiting the campus, attending meetings, and signing up for electives. We found out our daughter was denied enrollment to Luther last Wednesday, and Luther cheer team tryouts that she signed up for started five days later. This goes beyond a preference over two schools, it has become more of a disruption to our lives. While none of this discussion is intended to disparage the quality of Huerta, especially when I noticed I was sitting next to the principal of Lipidico, we, and we also understand the need to balance schools' populations for funding. I'm hoping that we can get more information, which a lot of you presented, to just understand that the process is treating Roosevelt families fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna just read some of the names if, uh, to make sure that, uh, if our borough students are here, if they want, you know, they want to leave early, that's fine. Tavia Selly? You want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to address one thing, thank you.
Come on. You're not a student, sorry.
I wish I was still a student. Thank you. I'll pay you later, thank you. My son is at John Burrows High School, he plays football with a lot of these guys back here, and I appreciate your update, and thank you so much for making sure that's a priority for the fall. But as you know, we start practice June ninth, and we're practicing out there three hours a day, and, you know, it gets into July, and it is hot, and these boys often get injured in the summer at practice on the grounds of the school. So that, I think, is a big concern, I'm often at practices, you know, I watch my son, I'm going to be the Frosch team mom this year, coming in to the fall. And that's my biggest concern, so what can we do to have someone there in case of a medical emergency?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm just gonna, again, if, I'm gonna read your name if you're here for the, keeping the... for the, keeping the athletic trainer, Beth Schroeder? You want to speak, actually? Okay, come on.
Do I want to speak? No, not really.
No, I was just asking for the students, because some of them were like, we're not, and, you know.
So, good evening, everyone, um, thank you so much for giving us the time to talk. Dr. Paramo, thank you so much for listening to us. I appreciate you saying that, we all are here, there's so many more people that wanted to be here that couldn't, so, thank you. I have a sophomore varsity football player and a varsity volleyball captain. Lala is my son's girlfriend, so that's why I was taking pictures of her for her mother. But, I'll just read what I wrote, just so you understand how important it is, you know, to us parents, so. On behalf of my family and many sports parents at John Burrows High School, I'm here to support a very important person to us, the athletic trainer at Burrows, Ms. Gallo, or as Ms. G., Ms. G. as we like to call her. We have learned that her position as athletic trainer may be eliminated, which now we find out is hopefully not true. My husband and I have two sons at Burrows, Carson, a sophomore varsity football player, and Kayden, a senior volleyball captain. Ms. G. has been there for my boys on so many occasions, ranging from one of those nasty turf burns to a concussion to a broken ankle. She not only cares for the students physically, but she is a constant source of mental and emotional support as well. Last year, as my son was about, about to embark on a breakout volleyball season, he severely injured his ankle. Needless to say, his spirits were low. Ms. G. was there to rehab him, body, mind, and soul. She truly goes above and beyond. Losing her would be detrimental to the sports program on so many levels. I implore you to recognize the absolute importance of her role at Burrows and what she means to many students and their parents. So, thank you for understanding.
Thank you. Jacob Flores?
Just want to say, I'm so proud I got to be your counselor and your, uh, club advisor hike and, um, Rose, like, I just, I cannot tell you how proud I am of you. I just, every time I see you on camera, like, it's, it's been a pleasure for me, so, thank you. Uh, good evening, President Agarhany and Dr. Paramo and members of the board. My name is Jacob Flores and I'm a school counselor at Burbank High School. I'm here tonight to speak about someone who means a great deal to our campus, Rima Armions, our Classified Employee of the Year at BHS. Rima wasn't able to attend the late March board meeting where honorees were recognized and I really felt compelled to be here tonight because her presence and the energy she brings to our campus deserves to be honored publicly. When I first joined Burbank High during the 2020-2021 school year, Rima was our counseling assistant. That was a year filled with challenges none of us were prepared for and even in that chaos, Rima showed up every day with this calm clarity and unwavering kindness. She helped coordinate SST meetings, translated for Armenian-speaking families, and I myself supported with Spanish speakers and translations, so, we often work closely together. She ran DNF reports, helped manage new enrollment, mentored and kept our office TAs afloat, and fielded more phone calls than I could ever count. And she did all, uh, all of that with grace, not just efficiency, but grace, and there is a big difference. Over time, she took on new roles, becoming the Senior Secretary of Curriculum and Instruction and now our Office Manager. She helped our admin while they navigated the difficult puzzle pieces of the master schedule, was key in coordinating the complicated logistics of AP testing, uh, sorted materials, tracked proctors, coordinated substitute teachers, and somehow still remained the emotional center of our office. Because Rima isn't someone who gets things, uh, isn't just someone who gets things done, she's someone who lifts people up. She is truly a beam of light. She's patient, nurturing, and deeply collaborative. She brings a positivity that doesn't feel forced, it's her default setting. She has this grounded maternal energy that allows people, students and staff alike, to breathe a little easier just by being near her. She makes school feel safer, she makes work feel possible, and she makes people feel seen. And as someone on the counseling team, I have to say, senior secretaries are the unsung heroes of school systems and especially on a campus as large and intricate as Burbank High. I cannot do my job as a counselor without them and Rima and the other secretaries are the connective tissue between so many departments. Rima is the unofficial therapist, logistics manager, translator, and historian, and she does it all with a smile, a sharp eye, and a kind word for everyone. Now, I'm also honored to be here tonight for another reason, because we're celebrating some beautiful transitions in leadership that deserve acknowledgement. And I cannot tell you how ecstatic I am that our BHS principal, Narine Barzagar, has been elevated to Director of Student Services. I worked closely with Narine during our WASC accreditation process and I'll say this, I don't know how she kept as much on her shoulders as she did while still leading with so much care and clarity. She has a quiet strength and her belief in structure, support, and grace under pressure helped shape the culture we've built at Burbank High. And to know that she's going to be able to spread that grace to the rest of our district in such a crucial role, especially one involving safety, thank you all for, uh, recognizing worthy talent and elevating the best people to important positions of influence. And then we have Dr. Anna Page, our BHS school psychologist, who is stepping into the role of Program Specialist in the Special Education District Leadership Department. I've seen Anna advocate fiercely for students who often don't have a voice, whether that's in IEP meetings, crisis situations, or just hallway check-ins. She brings her whole heart to her role and has been a lifeline for so many families and students navigating complex needs. She leads with empathy and deep purpose and she so effortlessly nurtures talent within her interns that I truly believe she will have a transformational impact on our district. And finally, I want to recognize Jennifer Gripth, who was just appointed Assistant Principal at Jefferson Elementary. Jennifer has been a curriculum specialist, an elementary teacher, and most recently, a teacher on special assignments, supporting new educators through BUSD's induction program. But the way I know Jennifer goes back to 2021, when we worked at the Learn, Grow, Thrive Summer Camp in partnership between BUSD and the YMCA to help students reconnect and heal after such a difficult school year. I remember how natural she was with kids, how thoughtful she was with our team, and how committed she was to building community, even in a short-term program. And that was at the time when I had first landed my permanent job with Burbank High, so I hold my memories of those times with her so close to my heart. And now, as her daughter Miley prepares to graduate from Burbank High, Jennifer is stepping into this next chapter of leadership and that feels so full circle and so well-earned. So, yes, I came to speak about Rima, but I also came to say something bigger. This group of women, Rima, Narine, Anna, and Jennifer, they represent the kind of leadership that doesn't need a spotlight, but absolutely deserves one. They've shown up for their sites, their students, their colleagues, and this district, not just in their titles, but in their spirit. They've led with care, they've created safety, they've modeled what it means to serve without ego and to uplift without fanfare. I've had the privilege of working beside them, just five seconds, uh, and I'm proud to say that the strength of Burbank High and BUSD is made visible through people like them, so, thank you for, uh, my time.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Next is Mandy Ryan. Very good, Mandy? Carla Taylor? Carla Taylor? Karina?
Bussi.
Bussi?
It happens all the time.
Thank you, well, look at my last name. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm a Roosevelt parent and proud community member. I call it the community, I don't want to say school, community, because that's what it feels like. Appreciate your email today and appreciate all the facts. I definitely cannot follow Callie Sellers, great speech, and that's the kind of kids that are part of that community. And I know numbers are being thrown around, just think about this number, seven. Seven years to build the village that helped raise my kid, you know, and it's, great teachers can be at both schools, great programs, but that village that travels with you, we have one in a million village. My daughter was going through some anxiety and some stress at school and the one, the few people that helped her were actually other parents. And those parents are at both schools, they're at Roosevelt and at Luther. And, you know, they are weeks from graduating and these kids, all they can think about is the indecisiveness, right, of where school they're going to instead of celebrating a big accomplishment. So, just something I consider, we appreciate you taking the time and really taking this, um, this, uh, issue seriously, so, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Woodward.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Paramo and staff. Thank you for easing our concerns with your statement early, Dr. Paramo. My name is Elizabeth Woodward and I'm a lifelong Burbank resident, born at St. Joe's and graduate of John Burrows High School. As you now know, I'm here to express my concern over the funding constraints to keep Ms. Gallo on staff at Burrows. I was a student athlete and I had to use the trial and error, trial and error method to wrap my shins for my track and cross-country meets because we did not have a Ms. G. on staff. My son Ryder Tefoya is also a senior at John Burrows High School, just like Kayden. He's part of the NAF medical program. He's also the captain of his volleyball team and would be here tonight, but he's still at school practicing with his teammates. As Lala noted, um, the high school team won the volleyball league and now they're practicing for their second round of CIF, so I'm here in his place. Over his four years at Burrows, Ryder has needed and relied on the medical services from Ms. G. Three years ago, while at Open Gym at Vertigo Park, he was struck by a serve that hit him in the back of the head, causing him a concussion. It was Ms. G. that diagnosed him early the following day. Although I took Ryder to his pediatrician, it was the trust and care from Ms. G. that I relied on. Sure, his pediatrician saw him once a year, but Ms. G. saw him almost every day. It was her who helped, it was her, it was her help and guidance that helped oversee my son's care and return to court and, most importantly, back to the classroom. She continues to apply necessary tape and support for his aches and pains before each practice, every match, whether it's home or away. In addition to medical services that she has provided, Ms. G. has been a medical mentor as well. She provides priceless, hands-on guidance in the opportunities to my son and other NAF students and she has aspire, inspired him to pursue a degree in medicine. I urge you to fund Ms. G.'s future on behalf of all the bears, to be cared for and inspired by her. Please do not let her slip away, she is a valued and needed person in Burbank. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Monica and Arthur Moy, and that's the last card.
Is, I have something to say, is, when I am in fifth grade, I do not want to be split up like how some people are right now, like, I don't want, when my friends are going to Huerta, I'm going to Luther, I'm going to Luther, my friends are going to Huerta. And I do not be want to, want to be split up and many people don't either, so, yeah.
So, jumping on his point, um, my name is Monica Moy, this is Arthur Moy, he's in third grade at Roosevelt, and, um, thank you to the board and, um, Dr. Paramo for, um, giving this issue so much attention. I recognize that, you know, um, there has to be some line drawing, right? So, unfortunately, Roosevelt and another school has to be split up. But my understanding, perhaps incorrectly, was that the way to account for the fact that Roosevelt and the other school were disparate impacted by that line drawing was that there was more flexibility in granting these transfer applications. That may or may not be true, but at the end of the day, I think it would be great if the board could think of ways in which the Roosevelt community would not be negatively impacted by the line drawing. So, whether it is affording these families more flexibility when it comes to the transfers. I think everyone appreciates and understands how jarring and disruptive it is to these friend groups when they are split up. So, normally, other schools are not split up, but unfortunately, it is impacting Roosevelt and I appreciate your time and attention to this issue.
Thank you. You want to add something? Edison too? Good job, by the way. And last, Jerry Maloney? Malady, sorry. Looks like, oh. Malady, thank you. Hi, oh, Jerry. Jerry, how are you, Jerry?
Obviously, you don't know my last name. Before I get started, um, I don't know if you've had who you're gonna close the meeting in honor and memory of, but at our school, Jennifer Thompson, who was instructional aide, who's mine instructional aide for like twenty years, uh, she died last week and I think maybe she should be remembered.
Can you repeat the name again?
Uh, Jennifer Thompson.
Thank you.
She, she had a big, a lot, couple-year battle with the big C, so. Okay, now, all right, oh, God, half hour.
Mr. Malady, how are you?
Okay, I'm fine, yeah, Dr., um, my name's Jerry Malady, I, um, in, I, so, Dr. Paramo and, and leadership staff, I didn't hear that before, Dr. Harmanian and school board and people that are here or not here, um, all right, I just started that, okay. So, um, first off, I, I watched the meeting last week, or last time, and was kind of, thank you, Dr. Weisberg, that you corrected my name. It was, it was kind of a lot weirdy, like, if you don't know who I am, that is. But, uh, so, this is kind of like, I could say, so, obviously, I'm retiring, um, these are kind of like thoughts I've had, uh, because I can start saying things like this, because I'm not, won't be employee or, or a BTA member. But, you know, I, I was just thinking, I, we really, I mean, well, first off, we all know we need more revenue, so, that's a big thing. But I was think, I was thinking, like, this is a time that we are at that, you know, we got, the role must not as high, but, you know, if we gain, if we get more money, we could maybe start some programs that would attract other people or something like that. So, like, I mean, like, a couple of things that, I assume that the leadership is going to like Chamber of Commerce meetings and things like that. But, I don't see why we don't have, like, when the, the schools advertising a leader, there's Glendale, there's La Canada, there's Pasadena, there's not, we're not there. I don't, I don't understand why that is. Attracting new teachers, it's gonna be a problem, because I counted for the reception, BTA receptions, thirty-two teachers retiring, and I know one more on your sheet, so, um, that's a lot. And, and there's not a whole lot coming in. So, I, I think if we start having, maybe we can do it, we should look into ways that we could attract more teachers, maybe it's, probably costs money, but there's a lot of ideas out there and, um, you know, I know the money's the problem and a lot of these are schools that have property tax, a lot of it, so. But, you know, but like, like, for example, like, there's like having teacher interns, keep, be, uh, very, uh, competitive with salary and benefits, a twelve-month paycheck. I mean, especially as teachers starting out, it's easier for them to budget. All right, and for our schools, I think the kids should have, I know we have financial literacy's coming down the pike from the state, but I think there should be like media literacy, technol, technol, technological literacy for sure, because they don't know, I mean, you think that all these tech generation, uh, no, they know how to use their phone. They don't know how to use a computer, they don't know how to set things up and all that. And media literacy, what can I say, just look at the country. There's, um, oh, yeah, uh, there's a lot of different honor societies for high schoolers that I don't, we don't, I don't know why we don't, like, there's a Spanish one, English one, and, um, social studies one, so, I don't know why we, math one, there's a lot, I wish we would have more, the kids like the bling, I know that, so, you know. I've talked, talked about this before, uh, making grading meaningful, like, it's, you know, not just points, like, who the hell, sorry, who the heck cares that it's just points, you know? It's, it's more, and I, and even though I'm, won't be an employee, I'd be more than, still more happy to work with you and Dr. Macias on that. Finally, there's a couple of things that we had, or not final, but I'm probably gonna go over, um, is that, when I was, when I got my master's degree, we had, I had a class in teacher leadership and this is things that teachers could do without going into administration, and I really think that's something to be looking to more, even though it was ten years ago, um, because I know, like, for myself, I wanted more, do more things, but I didn't want to be administrator, you know, so, that, there's a class in that, um, you know, like, action project, action research project, I think you recall? Okay, so, finally, um, I want to say I appreciate you folks, I like the relationship that our association, I'm not speaking for my association, but, uh, as BT has had in the last few years with the board and the district, I think it's been a really good one, considering some of the ones I had in the past. This since like thirty-two years of being Burbank Unified. This since like 32 years of being Burbank Unified. You know, uh, four years in the, in, as a student and then 25 years, why does that adding up? Six years, yeah, okay. Seven years as a student and then 25 years as a employee. And I just, it's, I, you know, you're, you're talking about what Burbank community is like and all that. I tell people, it's like the Hotel California. You can check out anytime, but you never leave. You know, I'm an example of that. I mean, I, I feel, you know, I live in a different city. I know more about the politics going on here than I do, probably because I hear more. And just want to say thank you once again for the niceties you said, you know, you couldn't pronounce my name right, uh, last time. And I wore this shirt just to, I don't know, be, be a bad boy. But I, I, I do have two degrees from USC, both a master's and a bachelor's, so. I guess I, oh, one, oh, well, one more thing is I want to tell you that the HR department has been really helpful in this retirement process. I mean, I wasn't expecting that, so. You can help me later. But no, they've been really helpful. I mean, and benefits too, so, anyway, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. Always great to see you. Thank you. All right. Yes. Faidan. Yes. Mr. Vladimir Ivanisian.
Very good, thank you. So hello, everyone. I didn't plan to speak today, but I heard that many people are talking about the financial problems in our district and I wanted to share also uh, from my club and mine as a president, I wanted to talk about that we, uh, Global Unity are ready to share about, uh, whatever, I mean, whatever law or whatever, uh, policy you're going to implement, we're going to, we are ready to share. Uh, inform students about that. It's, can, it can be a parcel tax, right, on properties. Uh, we can talk about that with students, share about it, how important is it? Also, I want to say that, um, I talked with, uh, Dr. Farber, our, our school assistant principal about adding a new, adding a new period, new class to, to our school on campus. Our Mini 101, uh, as a, as a college class, it's college class right now that you can take on GCC or in, at any schools, uh, in our area. But if it, if it would be on the campus, I think it would be great. Because as I know, uh, many students will take it, the class. Because, I mean, Mr. Flores can approve whatever I say. Uh, and, uh, many students come to counselors to take that class. And the job of counselors getting bad, you know, getting full. And also I know you reduce the number of, you limit, uh, the, the number of counselors throughout the district. So, so if, what it can solve, it can solve, it can ease the job for counselors. Especially when it's limiting to five, uh, from six to five, uh, also it can generate more, it, they, we can add more money to our district by, by that, because many students will take that class and I think state gives more funds for that. Because we, for example, we have AP, uh, anthropology class, uh, in, you know, on our, on our campus and many students don't take it. It's just like 10 people that are in that class. There are some classes that are full, like 40 people are in class, 40, 40 people are in one class, on, in one period. That's, you know, uh, and also our, uh, ma, ma, many workers in our school. Uh, they, I think it's, we, we, we need to support everyone financially and every like facility. What I wanted to say also, I wanted to say that, uh, we as Global Unity, uh, we are, I want to say again that we're ready to work with you in any way. Please, uh, tell me that, if we can help you, yes. And also the navigational system project that I spoke on the last meeting is, we're finishing it up. Almost we're on the, on the finish line. And so, yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any more cards? That's it? Okay. Superintendent Pramam.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to address some of the comments, uh, the remaining comments that were regarding the trainers. Uh, I want to tell a very short anecdotal story. About two weeks ago, we had a community member after school hours, probably around 3:30 or 4 o'clock, who had gone to Burbank High to run the track. Uh, who wasn't feeling well, and he came down the steps. And I know this because we have it on video, came down the steps and he fell to one knee and then fell over and was passed out. Uh, he had apparently had a cardiac event. It was the trainer, Nick, who immediately went to the gentleman, straightened his body out, tilted his head, began chest compressions and did CPR until the paramedics got there. The trainer did that. I understand the value. Uh, I get it. I want to clarify a mistake I made, uh, when I spoke the first time about trainers. We have two athletic trainers and one conditioning coach and the difference is in their training. So you have an athletic trainer at Burrows, an athletic trainer at Burbank High, and then you have a conditioning coach. These folks are invaluable, so I don't need to be convinced of that. I am 100% baffled why people think they're going away. Like I've been in Burbank for 20 years and I know that stories get started, but I have never signaled we were getting rid of them. I think that where this may have come from is the fact that they're on a consultant agreement that has a start date and an end date. That doesn't mean they're not going to continue. It means we enter another agreement. So there is every intention to enter another agreement. I am confused, uh, about the comments regarding summer, so I need to work with Dr. Macias. So if there are practices happening on BUSD property, uh, we can talk about, um, being able to hire trainers to cover that. Uh, I need to understand that because our facilities are so limited. Right now, uh, Dolores Huerta is going to take the brunt of hosting a lot of events for the summer because their roofs are not getting, uh, fixed. There's, we're in better shape than all the other schools, so that's the, the hub of where summer activity will be. The other schools are completely shut down for safety reasons. Uh, so I will work with Dr. Macias. If there's a need for a trainer in the summer, I will work with him to figure out what's reasonable, uh, what the hour should be and the extent of start time, end time. Uh, you don't have to worry about it. I'll figure that piece out with him and I'm committed to providing trainers for that. I, I honestly don't know what is helpful to explain the problem or situation that we're having at Roosevelt and these permits. Clearly, for the last six years, and the projection is for an additional six years, enrollment is going to keep declining. In LA County, the prediction is 18%. 18% over last 10 years, 10, 10 years. We're seeing that. We are seeing that. Look, when you look at the current Kinders right now, um, this, I'm rounding, about 800. But look at our seniors. Both senior classes at Burrows and Burbank Howard are at least 600, so that's 1,200. So you can see the difference. 1,200 as seniors, 800 Kinders. As they start to matriculate and get to be in the 12th grade, that number usually doesn't get bigger, it gets smaller. You have natural attrition. So you're seeing how this declining enrollment is affecting this community. You can pick up any paper, any newspaper and see in California, specifically Southern California, how many districts are closing schools? Central California is being hit big time. Modesto closed three schools, Napa Valley closed three schools. This is because of declining enrollment. We had a discussion two board meetings ago because the signal for a board of education and for a superintendent is once you get an elementary school that's dropping below 400, got to figure something out. Because once they get below 400, it's not cost effective to run that. That's what we're looking at. Those are the conversations we're having because of declining enrollment. Everything that was said today from parents about Roosevelt makes total 100% sense. It makes sense. If everything's the same, then how can the outcome's different? I'll try to explain that. What the law says is that based on your address, you are assigned a homeschool. You're assigned a homeschool for elementary, you're assigned a homeschool for middle school and you're assigned a homeschool for high school. That has always been the case. So we have always identified kids to their homeschool based on their address. This has never been a problem before because we hadn't experienced this level of declining enrollment. So if we have 15 kids that wanted to go over, there was enough padding because we had enough enrollment to make those changes. I will also tell you, and I don't have, I don't have a reason. I, I can't tell you what the reason is. Let me just give you two anecdotal data points. A year ago, when we were going through the permit process, there were 70 kids from Burbank High that wanted to go to Burrows. Never seen that before, ever. Have no idea where that came from. Did not anticipate it. It actually was a good problem at the time because enrollment was declining more at Burrows than at Burbank High. So this actually helped us and we let all 70 go. Let them all go. There was a period of time, probably five years ago, when Luther was the middle school, whose enrollment dropped below 900. I was not the, I was not the superintendent. The decision was made to cut an art teacher. The community went nuts. Because now their kids can't take art. I'm serious. He's the principal, he was the principal at Luther when that occurred. That's because staffing got too low. And here's what was happening. All these folks from Luther wanted to go to Huerta. And I couldn't let them all go. I couldn't let them all go because then instead, and not, instead of just art that went away, it would have been art and music. Right? And so we didn't let them all go. We figured out, this is what we did, is one for one. So if one kid wanted to go to Luther, then uh, one kid from Luther wanted to go to Huerta, we will do it if one kid from Huerta wants to go to Luther, so that no one was negatively impacted. Some kids got their inter-district permit, intra-district permit granted and some didn't. That was just five years ago. Now this is flip flopped. It's flipped, flip flopped and now it's Huerta that has a smaller enrollment. It's a smaller enrollment school. So that, those are the dynamics. Those are the dynamics of whether or not we can approve these transfers or not approve these transfers. I want you just to imagine for just a second. If I said today, let those 40 kids go to Luther. I'm going to tell you what's going to happen for me and I'm not asking you to feel sorry for me. But I'm going to have 900 parents, 800 parents that are going to come to me because their kids are going to Huerta and they don't get to take art and they don't get to take math because we're going to have to cut them. We're going to have to cut those teachers. So I, I am 100% committed to, how could I not, I, this beautiful young lady who came, how can I disappoint her? I'm trying really hard to make this work. I'm hoping that I can. Right now, my, I'm telling you where I'm resting on my hope. I'm resting, I hope, on the fact that there are people from North Hollywood, people from Sunland, people from Southern Valley that want to come to school in Burbank. And when they want to come to school in Burbank, I'm going to say, I got a great spot for you. It's at Dolores Huerta Middle School. And if you get them, if I can get them to go there, then I can start releasing some of these requests to go over to Luther. That is what my, that's what my aim is, that's what my goal is, that's what I'm trying to do. Uh, Dr. Macias, uh, we talked about this in executive cabinet on Wednesday, is having a meeting with me, with the CBO, with the HR person, with Student Services himself, the principal, to look at their staffing, to look at where can we cut, where are, where are the areas where we might be able to pare down so that we might be able to accept some of these permits. That meeting's going to happen on Monday. It's the quickest that we could, um, have that meeting because our Director of Student Services is out of the office until Monday. So we're on it, we're on it. I promise we're on it. Uh, and I don't have any data to hide and I'm going to tell you why and I'm just not trying to be snarky. You as people, community members of Burbank, can write an email or letter and under the Public Records Request Act can ask for all this data and I'm legally required to give it to you, so I can't hide data. We'll, we'll, I'll, whatever data you ask for, my understanding is you want to see the number of requests of permits. I'm sure Ms. Markinson already has that. Uh, I'll talk to her on Monday, we'll get those data sets together and I will share them with the board first. And then we will, um, share that with the, the fifth graders from, fifth grade families from Roosevelt. But I, I am committed to try to make this work. I will keep, uh, in communication with you. Um, and I'll do my very best. Jacob, you are so impressive. You, um, sat here for two hours and 28 minutes to shout out the people that you work with and it just shows how much you care, uh, how much you love these people. Um, and so yes, I'm very proud of Rema. Rema is amazing. Every time I go, I'm greeted with a hug. Sometimes I go just so I can get a hug because I'm having a bad day. Um, so I totally get it, but I also want to shout you out because uh, I think it says a lot about you and your character to take the time to come out here and to do that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Pramam. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who came out tonight. I apologize for middle school teacher voice. It's been a long year. I mean, week. I want to start off by talking to everybody from Roosevelt, so Cali and all the other students that came up, whether they spoke or didn't speak, way to go. Um, it's really scary to come up here and speak. And it's awesome that you care enough about something, that you're willing to do something scary, um, because that's how change happens. Uh, so what I want to talk about is where I think, you know, Dr. Pramam has talked a lot about the logistics, he's talked a lot about enrollment. So I, I want to talk about a couple of slightly different things. So the first thing that I want to say is I want to acknowledge that we needed to do a better job communicating. I think it's a really important piece of this. Had this conversation happened, now I, I think there are 100% valid reasons why it didn't happen at the beginning of the year because we didn't know it would have to happen. That kind of doesn't matter, right? So what we need to be doing is communicating from the start and saying, we don't know if this is going to happen or not, but here's what could possibly happen. We have an A scenario and we have a B scenario. And we're going to keep you updated throughout the year and we're going to revisit this. Because it sounds like what, what I'm hearing from a lot of people is not that you don't understand the rationale of why, but that it was such a shocking piece of information. And what you're responding to very understandably is I have a really upset kid. Absolutely. So I, I can promise you that that's something that we've all talked about, we all know we need to do better. Does that fix the problem in this moment? No, not at all. But I, I want you to hear from whoever, from me, that I acknowledge that we, we didn't do a good job there and we should have. So I, I hear that and I see smaller shaking heads, yes, agreed. Um, and I don't want to say larger heads because that's mean. More mature heads. So I think that's a really important, that's a really important point and one that I've taken to heart. Um, I also want to talk very briefly about, when we talk about declining enrollment, it isn't because our schools aren't amazing, I double negative apologies, but rather because people can't afford to stay in Burbank. Um, so this is something I'm really, uh, imploring our community members to speak to our city about, speak to city council about. Because when we look at the exit data from our families that are going, they're not going because they're saying there isn't good programming, I don't like my teachers, support staff is mean to me. They're leaving because they cannot afford to live in Burbank. We can't do anything about that, but we continue to have conversations with the city. So I'm not trying to place blame on someone else, but I am trying to focus us on the fact that this isn't about declining quality, but rather the impossibility of staying in an amazing place like Burbank that we're all just, whether you rent like me or own, you're being priced out of. So it's a really real scary reality that we, it's, it's hard because we have no control over that. Um, I also do want to take a second, even though I really want, I wanted to thank you for highlighting the fact that you weren't denigrating. Um, I also do want to take a second, even though I really want, I wanted to thank you for highlighting the fact that you weren't denigrating Huerta. But it's, I want to just shout Huerta out for a quick second. I don't hear any parent here, kid here saying, I don't want to go to Huerta because it's bad. Nobody said that. But I do just want to say Huerta's the coolest. Um, and I'm not saying it to convince you or talk you into it. I'm saying it just because I imagine our teachers and our principals and our classified staff at Huerta are sitting at home feeling really bad. About the fact that, and, and they know, right? A lot of them are parents, a lot of them understand this is about wanting kids to stay together. But for anybody who might not have that point of reference, that touchstone, Huerta is like, like Luther, an extraordinary place to send your child. Uh, Ms. Hatchew is here, is phenomenal, the counseling staff, the teachers. Every time you go to Huerta, it's just the best feeling in the world. It's a place I love to visit. And so for anybody who's sitting at home going, well, I wonder where I'm going to send my kid to middle school. You can't go wrong with Mir, Huerta, or Luther. You just, you literally can't. So I just wanted to take a second to shout everybody out at Huerta because I imagine it can feel kind of yucky to be at home going, but wait, we are also awesome. Because they are also awesome. Um, so what Dr. Promised, I can't make promises, but what I can, well, no, what I can promise is that we're going to do a better job of communicating to parents. Um, I'm hopeful we'll be able to come back to you once all the permitting is situated. One of the things that I've asked Dr. Pramo of, out of the families that have requested permits, how many are sixth grade? I know we also have some seventh and eighth grade kiddos who have asked to permit out, and that, that matters, right? Even if it's just a few, that matters. So we'll get the data. Um, we will continue the conversation. But I don't, I do want you to feel like you can still reach out and talk to us. I know we haven't solved anything. But, um, to echo what a couple of you said, I hope you're hearing how seriously we're taking this. Um, and how we're trying really hard to identify areas that we can improve upon next time. So stay tuned, please reach out, and I really do appreciate your continued advocacy. And also for, um, the kiddos, for your advocacy because it is powerful. Um, and even if things don't end up working out exactly the way you want, don't stop advocating for the things that you care about because it does matter. Um, thank you to everybody from Burrows who came out to talk about, um. To talk about our trainers. Burbank is amazing. It's also a giant gossip mill. And so it's, it's often really hard to tamp down, Jerry laughed. It's really hard to tamp down rumors. But I also get it because we care about the stuff we care about. So if we even get the whiff that something might be leaving and it's a thing we care about, we, we leap into action. And I, when I, when I heard about all the Burrows families, I asked John, I said, has anybody gotten any emails about this? And we hadn't gotten anything. And so my greatest fear is that the first time I hear about an issue is at a board meeting. Because it means I've had no time to prepare. I've had no time to ask these fabulous humans a million annoying questions. They're probably happy about that. But I can't do anything if I don't know. Um, and so for me, it's scary to see a lot of comment cards about something I don't know anything about. So for anybody, whether it's our, our amazing Burrows advocates for our trainers and our conditioning coaches or anybody, please don't let a board meeting be the first time. It can be the second time, or the tenth time, or the twentieth time, but don't let it be the first time. Because it means none of us have had time to do any work on solving your problem until you're here. So just, you know, it's, what is it, Jerry Maguire, like, help us help you? I can do nothing in this moment other than get to work. And if I had known sooner, I could have gotten to work sooner. So that's an important point. Um. Jerry, it's always great to see you. Um, it's always great to pronounce your name correctly. Um. I always appreciate your thoughts on all the things. Um, I made some notes, um, about, uh. So I did want to say something about our enrollment, which is, you know, you're not the only person who's talked to us about, you know, advertising in the leader and doing things like that. And I, and this is, I'm not trying to be a jerk, like I subscribe to the leader, but it's like me. And many other, I'm like, wait, they're listening. It, it's not a huge circulation, right? And so when we're thinking about where we put our resources for enrollment, we really want as much bang for our buck as possible. So I think part of the reason we've chosen to reach out elsewhere is about what can, where can we get the most people? And so one of the things, a few of the things we've been trying to do, we've reached out to our amazing union partners. A lot of people still don't know that if you work in Burbank for ten hours a week, you can send your kiddos to Burbank Unified. And if you're one of the amazing union workers who's working on our airport, even when you stop. So you work in Burbank for a year, you can still keep your kids in Burbank Unified. So we're working on that. We're really getting creative about where we can reach large groups of people and help them understand that they can send their kiddos to us. Um, but all, any suggestions people have, we will take. Um. I agree with you about media literacy training a, a great deal. My middle school students can use their phone like nobody's business. But ask them to attach a document to an email and it's literally a nightmare. So yes, although that's not really media literacy. I don't know what you call that. It's called Microsoft Word literacy. I don't know. I'm old. Um. Thank you for your suggestion. I don't know. Thank you for your suggestion about adjourning in honor of Ms. Thompson. I'm sure that we will do that. Um, I think I got everybody, but, uh, Mr. Fiskus, thank you again for speaking. And I do want to thank everyone for the very respectful, uh, communication. I know this is like a deeply, uh, emotional issue for students and parents alike. And, um, as groups of people that are very used to being yelled at. Um, it's nice to have difficult conversations like two human beings. So I appreciate all of you for that.
Thank you. Board member Connor.
Okay, in terms of athletic trainers, good. That's actually what my undergraduate degree is in. So, um, and that's actually what led my path to teaching. Um, in terms of Roosevelt, yeah, I think everybody, you've heard everything here. I guess I would, might, as a sixth grade teacher, you know, myself. Um, just to remind her that, and as a mom, okay? And I remember because I actually had to go for an inter-district permit so that I could have my daughter closer to where my mom was, who, because she was going to be picking her up. Because I work in Montebello. So I understand that. But, uh, the flip side is there's always been an inter-district permit issue and, you know, you're never quite sure. And that's the thing I think I want people to make sure, maybe that's the takeaway for everybody. It's like, it's never a sure thing. And so when you said, you know, school staff and everybody administrators, you know, assured me, I was like, ooh, maybe that's the thing we need to talk about. So that like, like, uh, um, Dr. Weisberg said, that idea that, yeah, we have more communication and people do understand it's never a sure thing. That's why it's called a permit, you know? But the other thing is, um, just as a middle school teacher and mom. Anytime you move and you make that change, and I do, I get, I know that. For seven years, you worked there together to build that family. And I, you get that and you're like, you know, you know, you've done your PTA thing, you've done this, you know it. And that issue of changing and going to a different place, just remember it's going to change a lot anyways, okay? Your kids are going to be going with new people and making so many new friends. So my daughter ended up, because when we, actually, we had to go to Luther because that was my, where my mom was. But all everybody from Roosevelt then, this is, you know, I don't know, fifteen years ago, they all went to Huerta. And so, you know, which was back then it was Jordan. And so she was like, oh, you're my friend. You know, you're like, oh my God, oh, where, and then we ended up making all these friends in Luther. And actually, those are a lot of the friends she actually is with today. So again, it, it, there's always a time of growth and I don't know which is harder, the middle school transition for the kids or for us, the parents. It's tough. It's hard. I get it. So I do understand in terms of that. So I think in terms of, one thing I was thinking, could we ask maybe, um, Ms. Hatch if, you know, especially for some of the kids that didn't go to some of the events and stuff? That we really make some compensations for this and we do some, you know, extra, you know, supports and stuff to get you, you know, into knowing it. So just so you have that idea of what, you know, Huerta is. Because, you know, the, the reality is the numbers are really what they are. So I, I do want to keep that in, in, in consideration. And like I say, maybe we start just kind of seeing if, if, um, if we can get some more. Mrs. Hatch giving us some more information for you guys. And, oh, the one thing that was said was that, you know, in terms of kids with IEPs, kids with IEPs are going to be served anywhere. And Huerta's going to do just as good a job as Luther's going to do, you know, and, and as Mir would do. Um, Mr. Flores, really well said. That was so sweet of you. Um, Mr. Malini, congratulations. And then, um, the whole thing with global unity and stuff, there's still some things I'd really like to know more about this. And just really interesting, the idea of the, you know, Armenian class on campus, you know? I mean, things are always thinking, I like that you're just still, you know, in high school and still thinking these big, big thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board clerk Tabit.
Thank you. Um. Dr. Weisberg, with your permission, I want to add to your, your comments about it is declining enrollment is not just about. Uh, the expense or whatever of living in Burbank. It's birth rate, yes, across the country. Birth rate is a decline. Families are opting not to have children or having one, et cetera. And that is affecting all of our schools. So yes. Thank you, Mr. Cantwell, for making up for the rest of us. Appreciate it.
And Ian Moss.
And, and me. Yes, my, my, uh, my son lives in Georgia and has two children. And the president had just come out about possibility of giving, uh, five thousand dollars for a, another child in your family. So I texted my son and I'm like, hey, can I get a third grandchild for, for that five grand? And he goes, if it were fifty thousand maybe, but five isn't going to cut it. So, um, yeah, I just don't, right? And the cost of college or whatever your child wants to do after high school is. It's tennis shoes, exactly. Or participating in, in any kind of activity, right? There's, it's tons of money, right, right? And it seems to be never ending and you add. There's no, that's right. There's not. Anyway, I just wanted to add declining birth rate to that. Um, so, and I think that our administrative staff is being very diligent about how they're choosing to spend money and work on programs to keep them afloat. Because really, it, that's what's important, right, for your kids? To make sure those extra programs are viable, safe, and available. So I appreciate that staff. I also appreciate, uh, when you were speaking to the Roosevelt parents and students and to the athletes at Well and their parents that came. Is that you, you said, we're going to try. It wasn't a, I don't know, not, you know, numbers, it's all about the numbers. It's not that, you know, we're just sticking to that. That wasn't his answer. His answer was, give us a minute, we're going to try. And I, I can't ask for more than that. I appreciate that as a board member and as a community member. That's what I want to hear from everybody. It's the same thing you as a parent say to your kid. Sometimes you have to say no. Sometimes, most of the time, I hope you get to say yes. But sometimes it's going to be, you know, it's a maybe, we're going to try. And then I know as a parent, those times that you did have to say no, that we work together to make whatever the alternative to that no is. The best possible outcome for your kid. Uh, I think, Mrs. Conno, you, you said that well, that sometimes surprising things happen when you take a different pathway you weren't expecting to. So it's not all bad, but I get it because that, those groups of friends that you make and the parents that you know are very important. They provide that village that I know that's what makes Burbank special, is those villages that we create. So I appreciate you, and I know, I know you're, figure out the best possible answer for everybody because that's what you do. Um, so thank you for coming down and staying through the very, 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 very long meeting. That happens in May and June because there's so many things to get through. So appreciate it. Um, Mr. Flores, you know I love you to death. And, um, Dr. Weisberg says she's sorry she forgot you, but I didn't. And so. I'm just teasing you. Uh, you, you know, I've, I, I send you little messages all the time when I think you've done an outstanding job. So to take the time to come down here and speak for your colleagues and people you work for. I, I know every person who walks onto a campus makes a difference at some point during the day. But there's always those special people that go a little bit extra. I mean, you can't be an educator or a part of a school district without having that mentality. So thank you for reminding us of all the special people out there that go above and beyond. You're, you're, you're very special too. So thank you. Um, Mr. Malady, I, I hope you come back. Okay, good. Because I, I know your name and I said it correctly. And when I see you at football games, I'm always like, Jerry, Jerry. So, uh, we'll keep that going. Um, and come back and share your thoughts with us. It's always good to hear from retired employees because you're right. You feel more, um, I don't, bold, yes, emboldened, uh, to, to speak. Because, you know, it's hard when you're an employee. You don't want to upset anybody. But sometimes you need to say something and I get it. So that's the time you should just write a board member and, and it's all good. Uh, but now you can just come back and speak to us. So that's great. Um, Vlad, again, thanks for coming back and sharing your thoughts for, with us. I'm looking forward to whatever you've got going on coming up. Just let us know so that we can, we can be there. Um. I think I've. Got everybody. Oh, and, uh. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President, President Kamkar.
Thank you, Dr. Argakanyan. Um, so, um, Mr. Malady, thank you for coming. Congratulations again on your retirement. Do not take it personally if people mispronounce your name. Dr. Argakanyan mispronounces my name most of the time. And I know that he still likes me. And everybody mispronounces Ms. Conno's name.
And everyone mispronounces my name.
And everyone mispronounces his name.
Like today, which I will tell you what the translation was. You wouldn't want it.
Oh, no. Oh, no. So, um, but we're, we're, I'm so thrilled for you, um, and whatever comes next. And please continue to come back. And I think, um, you know, I love all your ideas about making sure that the kids get honored for what they're really excited about in school. I think that, that the idea of adding these extra honor societies is a good one. Um. Vlad, um, we'll continue to connect over email. Um, I really appreciate you being willing to step up. Um, because it's always good to have student voice, um, in these, in these kinds of things, especially when we're talking about funding and how we might spend funding. Um. Jacob, uh, oh, just, it's like really lovely to see you come out and support your colleagues, right? Like you're not advocating for yourself. You're just advocating for your colleagues and, and recognizing them for doing really amazing work. Um, you know, it was interesting, the day that we did the, uh, classified employee recognition was a day that we had a board meeting at the district office. Which is always, um, kind of painful. I mean, it's, this is not always the most amazing place to have a meeting. But it was really hard to, um, have conversations with folks and recognize them appropriately. So I just, I really appreciate you coming out and talking about that. Um, I don't have much to add to the, um, conversation about Burrows and the trainer. But, uh, you know, I appreciate that, that folks came out and talked about this and I have no doubt that, um, Dr. Pramo's on it. Um, and figuring out how we make sure that we keeps, keep our kids safe while they're practicing. Um, so, uh, to our Roosevelt parents and students. Um, so I have a kindergartner and a second grader. Um, and one of the things is that when this came up, um, with Dr. Pramo earlier this week, um, was what I mentioned to him was, you know, you really only pay attention to where your student is zoned, uh, when you're enrolling for kindergarten or TK and maybe not then again after that, right? Uh, middle school feels very far away when you're enrolling your kid and you're really not, at least for me, I know I'm not thinking that far ahead. I, my kid will go to Huerta. My kids will go to Huerta. Um, that's where we're zoned and that's, um, where I plan to send them. But again, like, it's not something that I've even thought about even from, from this seat. And so, um, you know, along with Dr. Weisberg, I want to own that, like, we haven't, I think we make the assumption that our processes are so crystal clear to everyone and that they will continue to, that they'll always look the same year after year. And that we'll be able to, um, make the same kind of changes we've been able to make in the past. Um, but we, we need to over communicate in a lot of ways. And I think that, that's really the lesson, you know, I've been on the board for now like two and a half years. And that's been the lesson for me, sitting in this seat for two and a half years, is that like, we need to do a better job. Just over communicating expectations and policy, right? Like, would it have felt maybe different if at the beginning of fifth grade, you were reminded, like, this is where you're zoned? This will be the process if you want to attend a different school, right? And maybe it would have felt different for Callie if she had said, I want to go to Luther. I don't know if my permit's going to be accepted. So maybe I'm going to go to the Huerta events too, right? Because that broke my heart to think that like, she's missed, she's missed out on things because she was making plans. Um, and we weren't clear about how those plans might change, right? And so, um, you know, I think that's been my request to staff is that we really remind families regularly about this is, this is what the current state of the, state of the map is essentially. Of, of where, what the plan is. This is what, this is how we think about students attending other schools, right? So that it's really clear what the priority is for bringing permitted students in. Um, and under what, what circumstances that makes sense. I think the other piece is earlier in the meeting, I made, uh, I asked. is, earlier in the meeting, I made, uh, I asked for us to look at enrollment zones along with kind of this overall future enrollment, right? Because maybe it doesn't make sense at this point where we're at as a district, to have two schools that have split enrollment, right? Um, we're, because we have three middle schools and two high schools, we're always going to have a middle school. Um, and I imagine that's really hard for those middle school students. And I think it has, it goes through these similar waves that we're seeing at the middle school level. But, um, I think it's something for us to look at, right? Does it make sense for, um, entire elementary schools to be split, um, especially since we have two of them? So, um, that doesn't solve this problem for you this year. Um, and, you know, my, if I can vision cast a little bit, it's that you wouldn't have to think about this at all, right? Like, you shouldn't have to see this, like, kind of how the sausage is made, um, and how kids get enrolled at schools, um, from your seat, right? It should just be really clear to you what the default is and what your options are. Um, and so I think that's what we all want to see moving forward. Um, and, you know, I think we'll, we'll see where things shake out in the, in the process as it is. So I can't make promises. I don't want to make promises that, um, I don't know if they're going to happen, but like, I just, I want you to know that, like, uh, this shouldn't be where we're at, right? And I want to recognize that, like, you're fully within your rights to be upset, um, because you had a very different expectation, and we didn't communicate expectations appropriately. So, um, you know, like I said, my kids will go to Huerta, I think it's a wonderful school. I don't think anyone's saying that it's not, right? Um, and it's okay to want to be able to stay with your friends and stay with the, the friends you made over the last six or seven years. Um, so, um, know that, you know, Dr. Promo and staff and Ms. Markerson are all, they want to make sure that you're where you're supposed to be. So, um, they'll keep working on it. We, I think, you know, Dr. Promo sent something out, uh, today. I think we're going to try to get an update within the next couple of weeks before the end of the school year, right? Because I know that the end of the school year will be hard if you don't know where you're going. So maybe we'll know by then. I can't commit to that either, but I think we can commit to an update by then. Okay? So thank you for coming out, though. It means a lot to us.
Thank you. Vice President Ponsor Kamkar. So, uh, I'm gonna start first with Mr. Malady. Uh, I've known you always as Jerry. Um, but I also want to apologize. Um, I'm one of the first people who did make a public comment about pronouncing people's last name properly, because God knows my last name, I get it wrong sometimes. But, uh, it's important, why? Because I've had experiences with students, including our own son. His name is Arameh. He gets mispronounced, Arameh. And he did make a correction to his teacher once. I got a call saying he kind of got upset and yelled at the teacher. He said, my name is Arameh, not Arameh. And we did make the correction. So I do apologize, Mr. Malady. It's, maybe it's also your USC, USC shirt every time you wear it, and sure, it just gets me in a panic mode, reminds me of the college loan payments we have to make every month. No. But I, we, and I love you, and you're wonderful, and I want to see more of you. You've kind of worked MIA for a little bit, so hopefully we'll see you more now. You're wonderful, and we need people like you. You speak the truth. Thank you. Um, so to Kelly and all the students, great job. You are brave. It is not easy to come up and speak, but, you know, I also understand part of the reason these permits were created were because of what you were talking about. Um, you know, so you do want to be with the friends, you want to be with the village, our other parents. I can understand it's a concern. And I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues said, but I am certain that Dr. Promo is going to be working on this. I think what we also need to address, and I say this not as just a board president, but also as a parent, is the bigger concern about what's happening with our education system. This is not going to get any better. And unless we come together as a community and address this, we're going to have these conversations over and over. Five years ago, it was the opposite. People wanted to go from Luther. We should not have these conversations, nor should we have these conversations about how difficult it is. I understand. I don't, I don't want our son also to be away from his friends, right? It is a village. I come from an education system, you go with the same people from kindergarten all the way to graduation. Imagine that. So I can imagine how difficult it is. But I think we need to also talk about what's happening right now. All my colleagues talked about, you know, I appreciate them talking about the cost of living, that is a factor also, but families not having. And there is a lot about what's happening right now. Um, people not having children because it's expensive to raise children nowadays. But there's so much more to it. But also, I think one thing we need to talk about is also our teachers and the way they're paid, and how this system is brutal when it comes to our teachers, meaning how they're paid per enrollment, you know? When, I've been to education systems that it doesn't matter, teachers are taken care of, even if the number's dwindling. It happens all the time. But that's a bigger conversation, because I think the way our state and the system and the way we're funding our teachers is just broken. We have to change that. We have to go back to keeping the village. But when we talk also about the village, you always want that teacher in your village. You want the same teacher. I grew up with the same teachers. To this day, I go to some other funerals, you know, because we all knew the teacher. We knew him by first name. So when we talk about families and villages, don't forget about the teachers, don't forget about your staff. And it's becoming difficult. They also have to move on because of cost of living and everything else. Now, I'm not going to lecture you about economics and what's happening, but it's difficult. It is difficult. So, and I want you, I say this because I want you to understand how, what challenges we're facing as a district, administration, yes. Um, you can come in. Thank you. I'm sorry. Being polite. But I think I can tell you just comparatively in some of the districts, I'm not tooting our own horn, you have a much understanding voice sometimes that is concerns. We're not playing the number game. We're not gonna, never gonna play the number game. So either we're gonna get to a bottom of this, or, you know, and I think it is important, I do also agree with my colleagues about at least letting you know that there is a possibility. And we will be having these conversations a lot about possibilities, unfortunately. There might be a possibility of where we have to lay off teachers, or faculty, or staff because of the budget concerns. These are the conversations a lot of districts are no longer talking about, but they're facing. Look at Pasadena and what's been happening with them. Look at Linwood, right, Ms. Conno? It's happening. So unless we address this in a bigger statewide concern where we don't have to talk about this, where we, only concerns we have is the education of our children, and how are they going to go out there and be competitive in the global markets, we will be having these conversations every time. But I do appreciate all of you coming forward. Trust me, as a parent, I can understand how difficult it is. And again, thank you to Kelly and all of you for being so brave. Kelly, did I say it right? Oh, did I say Kali? It is Kali. What did I say? Okay, sorry. I do have a bit of an accent. I do speak four, I do. I speak four languages, and some of them are very, anyways. But thank you. Also, um, to Mr. Flores, um, I really appreciate you coming forward and talking about your colleagues. Um, I'm sure we're gonna need some more hugs now from our friend. You know, I know that you said you always like, yeah, we're gonna need a lot of hugs of what's happening right now in our country and the economy and everything else. So, so make sure we don't forget about that person. But also, I want to thank you. You always come and talk about positive things and wonderful things. And I think it's important to people to understand, it's, this is what Burbank is about. You talk about village, you talk about, we are a big family. We all know each other. We grew up together. And I think it's important for us to understand that, you know, sometimes a little thank you or hug would make someone's day. So, so more thank yous and more hugs, everyone. And then last but not least, um, to Mr. Vlad Ovenisian. Um, we'll be talking more, you know? I appreciate what you've been doing and talking. I think it's important that we, you know, bring individuals like you forward, so people can see that there is a spiritual of global thinking and building villages, you know, in the city of Burbank. So I do appreciate you coming here and sitting through these meetings. I know how exciting these meetings get, but, um, thank you. And then, and, sorry. No way. But, um, again, for all of you also being here tonight, thank you very much. Um, and with that, we're going to move to the next item. All right. You can go. Thank you. Enjoy your evening. All right. Twelve, new and unfinished business? Oh, eleven, public. It is approximately 7:30. My watch is, oh, man. Oh, Jesus. Yours. Because everyone thinks it's quintero. I don't say quintero either. Say it. What, do I, I say quiterio, I say it fast. I say quiterio, I say it fast. I say yours. All right, everyone, back, back on agenda. Exactly. Cam. All right, okay. Eleven, public hearing. The Board of Education will now conduct a public hearing on the 2024-27 negotiated successor to the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees CSEA presented. Would anyone like to address the board on this matter? Okay, I don't see anyone. Dr. Promo, you want to say it? No, okay. All right. Okay, closing. Twelve A, approval of the 2024 negotiated successor of the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, CSEA, in accordance with the AB 1200, AB 2756. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Moved by Clerk Tabit and Vice President Ponsor.
Kamkar.
Kamkar. Okay, I'm saying it in Persian. I guess Kamkar is not, thank you. Is it Kamkar in Persian? Good. All right, now you corrected me. See, I, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Twelve B, adoption of Resolution 39, implementing certified layoff. Ms. Radenko. Get me all nervous pronouncing last name.
I do have a couple slides.
Thank you.
What's the password?
Not during state testing.
Okay. All right. All right. Good evening, Pres, yes, okay. Good evening, President Agakian, board members, colleagues, and community. Um, I have a couple slides to show you regarding Resolutions 39, 40, and 41. These are our certificated and classified layoffs. Harder. Okay. So, all right. So this first slide is about our classified layoffs. Employees that are laid off for classified, um, jobs are due to lack of work or lack of funds. We had approximately 40 reductions and reassignments for our classified employees. They have either, um, been reassigned to different positions and lower positions, or they have had a reduction in hours. This number continues to change as of the date of the, um, posting of this agenda. We've already reassigned different people, and they've bumped back into their position. So this is constantly changing throughout the summer. As people accept new positions, move up into a position, then the person that they bumped no longer is bumped, and they go back. So this number will continue to go down as we work through, um, the layoff process. We had, as you remember, we had 12 at-risk intervention teachers that were part of our layoff. Of those 12, eight of them, they re, were reassigned into positions that they held before. Four of them, though however, elected to be a layoff. Of those four, two of them have already been accepted and moved into the wellness and behavior specialist positions. So with the other two, I don't know if they'll apply for other jobs that they have, so maybe they'll be coming back as well. Okay? Um, next slide. Certificated layoffs. There's sort of two groups here. So the first one is our particular kinds of services. These are our teachers, nurses, counselors, administrators. Overall, we had 37 layoffs. Two of them were administrators, child development, and director of human resources, and 35 teachers. Through attrition, separations, retirements, or true vacancies, we actually, at the time of print, we had three, but we're already down to two. I was able to resend one in the last week. So we have two actual teachers that are being laid off, actual bodies of, so all the positions were laid off, but as far as who was affected by the layoff, it's two of them. Um, those are two of our health teachers. We also have the two administrators that will continue to be laid off. Our children's center teachers, these are ATB teachers. We had eight positions that were reduced in hours based on lack of work or lack of funds. Of those eight, eight positions, the reductions are between 30 and 60 minutes, so a minimal amount, um, on their time. And all of the resolutions, 39, 40, and 41, address these layoffs. Any questions?
Any questions? Dr. Weisberg.
I just wanted to thank you for the slides. I think they're really helpful, especially because I think often people don't see the differentiation between a reduction of hours and reduction of positions entirely. Um, and just thank you for your hard work on working to make sure that, you know, add, it's a, it's a really impressive number that out of 37, we're down to two. Um, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
For the classified, uh, reduction in hours, um, so a lot of those were school site-based folks doing, I saw like the number of, uh, technology teachers or library technicians, like, is that just they're going to work just few hour, hours overall? Is that kind of decided with the school site? How does that work?
So what usually happens is if the employee has a reduction of hours, depending on their seniority, they may bump into a different position. Most of them, almost 99%, like to stay where they are, and so they take the reduction of hours and then remain at their current site. Sometimes as, sometimes if it's a lack of funds, when they reduce them, when the funds come through, or they have extra money, they're able to provide those hours back to the employees. Um, sometimes the changes are made because of, um, the school hours, changes of bell schedules and things, kindergarten shifting from having different schedules.
Okay. And so sometime, because I remind, remember, remembering this now, that sometimes it's, school site funds can, uh, make up some of those hours. Sometimes it's PTA comes in with some funding for those kinds of things. Um, so this is just the kind of district-funded portion of their hour, kind of what their contract looks like it's going to be for next year, but that's not necessarily fine.
That's correct. So as you know, we start within March, we have to make these decisions, then it goes into May. We still haven't had the May revise. We still haven't had the May revise, so we still don't actually know the way our cycle works. We don't exactly know what all our exact funds are going to be until after May. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rojenko, for a wonderful presentation. Can I get a motion on 12B, please?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. 12C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12D, adoption of Resolution 41.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Yes.
Just really quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that, like, these are human beings who are either losing their job or having a reduction of hours, and we know that this affects everybody in different ways. And so even though we are seemingly moving quickly through these votes, it's not because we move quickly through the process and anyway indicates our thanks and gratitude for the people in these positions.
Thank you for clarification, Ms. Weisberg. Yes, and it is difficult, but again, thank you very much for your point. 12E, approval of Resolution 42. Declare, declaring salaries indefinite and to authorize regular and retroactive pay changes for the 2025-26 school year.
Can we just get kind of an explanation of what this? Yes. Sounds very nebulous, which I guess is on purpose, but can you explain it a little bit?
Yes, I can. This resolution is, at any time, salaries can change. So there can be a result of negotiations, there could be a result of legislation that comes through, there can be different factors that make it, so it could be anything that happens that changes even one person's salary, and so we need to have this resolution in place so that we're able to move forward and make these changes to a person's salary if necessary.
Thank you. Any questions on these? Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask one other question on that one? Do we approve this every year? Have I just missed it the last two years? Just making sure.
Yes, this is every year.
I've just never noticed it. What a fun thing for me to notice, right here in front of all of you.
Wow, where did everyone go? Thank you. Yes. Okay, can we have this motion again as amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Oh, I can't believe you don't remember this from last year. I'm just, I'm reversing it now, hold on. Thank you. See, we're lively, fun, great board. I'm so happy. Thank you.
No, that was the only one that was amended.
No, we already did. We have to... Was it 12B or was it 12F? I mean, 12E? E? All right, so also 12B, so we did E. Can I also get a B, you said, or C? B, as boy. Can I get also a motion on?
Who moves, so they can just move?
Yes.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm so proud of Vice President Ponsor Kamkar, because she literally memorizes these things, and she just remembered from last year that she forgot about. Isn't that wonderful? We already did 12B. Yes. Ms. Tabit.
Can I explain why 12B was amended? The settlement agreement got signed by the union. That's for the two employees to extend their benefits by one month instead of going to a hearing based on their layoff. And so it was signed after the board agenda items were due, and so that's why it was amended, because it was added after the fact.
Thank you. 12F, approval of board policy and administrative regulation 6200, adult education. I know Dr. Knappig is not here. Does any question? Ms. Kano.
Thank you. Just in terms of, I understood it, it was just, a lot of it's just like putting the new wording the way they want it. But I did have a question. Why did they take off the graduation requirements? Why did that, why was that taken out? Like, was that like for the, is that what a GED? I thought that would have been that. So is that what got taken out? Because that was all?
Yeah, that was an update from the California School Board Association. So these are the required changes that need to be done.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what, honestly, I don't know what the rationale was for that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion? A second, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item 12F. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12G, approval of board policy administrative regulation 6178 on career technical education.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12H, approval of variable waiver request certified staff. Anything, Ms. Rojenko, you want to add to this?
No, this is sometimes, this person is a speech and language pathologist, they're just completing their credential, and so they don't have maybe all of the certifications needed, and so this is in order for them to begin working with us while they, you know, finish up.
I did have a question. Sarah, so just with that, we just, basically, somebody on that, that's, who mentors them? And do we know, I mean, do they have a master teacher that comes out, or how does that? And also, the question was, do we, do parents know then that they've got like, I don't know?
It's not like, I know exactly what you're talking about. Ms. Kano, it's not like a teacher that's not highly qualified. So this is a highly qualified person. They just have some part in their, they have full permission to be working.
Got it.
This is just part of their credentialing process that they're still finishing up on.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just love that little teacher-to-teacher code thing. I know exactly what you're talking, that's great.
You're correct.
How many hours is that by, I'm curious?
A lot.
All right, we had a motion and a second? No, can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12I, approval agreement of professional service.
So moved. Oh, second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Can we just talk, can we get an explanation of this one? Is this something we've done in the past? Is this for new principals? What does this look like?
Yeah, no, this is, this is new. Dr. Backa, she is a kind of a coach, I guess you would say, and she coaches principals. She's, she was a previous school administrator, and so what she's going to be doing is working with our two high school principals, kind of a pilot program. And you can see in the board agenda item, they'll be working on goal-setting, strategy development, time management, boundary-setting, leadership qualities. It's, as you know, being a high school principal is one of our hardest jobs that we have, and so how to make sure they have a work-life balance, they stay healthy, and they make goals and do all of these things. It's very challenging, and so this is someone that'll be coaching with them. There's 12 sessions that she'll be working with them throughout the, I think she'll be starting, as soon as we get this resolution done, she'll be starting to work with them right now over the summer.
Sounds like she should be reading somebody's dissertation.
Uh-huh. Dr. Rojenko, I have, do you have a question?
1995.
It said that it was, it was $2,500 an hour, and then it said two hours, but then it said 12 weeks. So how does that?
She has different packages, and so what we're paying for is the 12-week sessions for the $2,500.
Okay.
Per principal.
Thank you, Ms. Kano. Any other questions? Do we have a motion already and a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, it's there. Two. 12J, approval of expanded learning opportunities program plan. Dr. Pramo, what?
It's just indicating where we, how and where we're spending our money for our ELOP funds.
Can I get a motion and a second? Motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12K, approval of addition of assistant principal alternative education under certified management salary schedule A. Ms. Rojenko.
Yeah, let me explain this. It's actually a new position. So for our alternative ed assistant principal, we did not have that on our salary scale, and so that person had to be placed with an assistant principal high school. And an assistant principal at a high school, comprehensive high school, has a lot of different tasks. It's pretty demanding. It's a whole different job than an alternative assistant, alternative ed, like Monterey, our SOAR program. It's more in line with a middle school principal, where there's not as many after-school activities, weekend activities, all of the evening.
All the time activities.
Yes, all the time activities. And so this really, whether we fill this position or not, is not, it's more just about, we already had this position. It's more about placing it properly on the pay schedule, and in fact, this will be a savings for us if we choose to fill this, because this is a lower level pay like an assistant principal.
Yeah, I was going to ask for that clarification, so I appreciate that you did it. So not an additional position, an existing position that wasn't appropriately placed on our salary scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12L, approval of employment contract for Andrew Cantwell, Chief Administrative, your name is Andrew? Chief Administrative Officer?
As amended.
Hold on, no, there's, as amended.
There you go.
I'm going to turn this one over to Dr. Pramo. This is actually L, M, and N that kind of go together that he's going to discuss.
So these two contracts are being moved forward and is a reconfiguration of how we are managing responsibilities at the district level. So we have taken a portion of what Mr. Cantwell's duties are and moved them to a new title of Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, so that Andy would be freed up to take on more of our legal cases and do some of our uniform complaint procedures, our Title IX complaints, which I believe will yield a huge savings for us, at which we will come back and report on. What I want to make sure the public knows is that this is 100% cost-neutral. This is not, this is not an increase in FTE. It is the same number of FTE. This position and the new responsibilities for Mr. Cantwell would warrant a 5% raise. There is no monetary compensation additional. What we'll do is adjust the amount of days that he would be able to receive, which is about 13 furlough days. So it's not costing us any money. A lot of the finance, budget, payroll, purchasing, print center, technology would move over to Miriam, who would be Assistant Soup of Business Services, and she will still assume the roles of Director of Finance as part of her job description. So that is how we're able to maintain it as being cost-neutral item. N is an adjustment to the job description, since we are modifying that for Miriam's position, and that is why you see it as a separate item. Can I answer? Any questions?
Any questions? All right, can I get a motion and a second? Yes.
So I know a big piece of this is having Mr. Cantwell take over all of our legal work. Is there anything that we anticipate using outside counsel for on a regular, I mean, I make up yes, but like, are there any specific areas that we feel like we're going to definitely need outside counsel for?
Yeah, that, I think that's a really good question. Let me, let me get a little bit more specific. Mr. Cantwell will still oversee facilities, maintenance. He will still be overseeing the bond, so those things are still his responsibilities. When it comes to legal services, what we are anticipating is that they are very focused in scope. They would be our uniform complaints, our Title IX complaints, any personnel, teacher, discipline situation, he would be able to help us with. Potentially, a worker's comp claim is something that he would be able to help us with. When it comes to special education, we have special education attorneys that we've been using for a long time, so that will stay separate. The way I envision this is that as our attorney, Mr. Cantwell will be able to oversee and look at every case that's come in and be able to determine which are the ones that he takes on and which are the ones that get farmed out to one of our legal teams.
Great, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Can I get a motion and a second as, for the item as amended?
So moved. As amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 12M, approval of employment contract for Miriam Abdulhamid for the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
I just want to just, I know you're going to make a motion right now, but I just wanted to say that Miriam has just been so impressive all year long. I can't tell you how much she has innovated.
Where are you, Miriam? There you are.
Our different mechanisms and processes, and we are finally at a point where we are innovating the way we route PTRs and all kinds of stuff that was in the dark ages, if I'm being honest, and we have made so much advancement in a very short amount of time. And I would ask the board that after you make your motion and vote, that she might be able to say a couple words.
I mean, we're all able to say all sorts of crazy stuff. I know. Do we, so moved?
As amended. Yes, it is. As amended. We have a motion, right?
In a second.
In a second. For 12M, as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Ms. Abdulhamid, why don't you come up and say a few words? Thank you.
Good evening, board members, BUSD colleagues, community members, and my parents, who probably are not watching anymore because it's midnight in DC, but hopefully tomorrow on YouTube. I wanted to just first thank our district leadership and board for this opportunity, for the trust you place in me just to continue being a changemaker for our district. It was only about a year and a half ago that I started at BUSD, and I can wholeheartedly say I'm incredibly proud of the progress we've made in fiscal, from day-to-day operations, forecasting, and even just the work culture. There, it's very, it's a stark difference, honestly. Although we have strides to go, I'm truly excited to see how that momentum will carry into other departments as we continue to innovate and improve. For those that know me well, I'm someone who thrives in the details, love problem-solving very much, hands-on, but I also recognize that this new chapter is about growing in a different way, empowering our current staff and cultivating their talent and their growth. I look forward to fostering a collaborative environment across fiscal, purchasing, payroll, IT, food services, kind of building systems that are not only efficient, forward-thinking, cost-effective, data-driven, but are really rooted in equity and continual improvement. I think business and operations often get pigeonholed to just being about the numbers, but being a former teacher and just having had education changed my life, to me, those numbers are really representative of students, teachers, of real people. So I hope to continue putting equity at the forefront of these decisions at BUSD. Lastly, just wanted to thank my amazing parents, again, hopefully on YouTube. I would say that the American dream for immigrant parents is seeing their children excel in ways they never imagined, and I hope I continue to make them proud and wouldn't be who I am today without them. Thank you again for the honor to serve in this new capacity. I'm excited and ready for what's to come, and I'm just proud to be... And I'm just proud to be leading, part of the change for BUSD and just to be part of this great team. So thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, any of my colleagues wanna say something? Are you good? All right. We're super excited. That's a great speech. We should run for office. Don't do it. Wait a little. Thank you. 12N, approval of job description for the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and the Chief Administrative Officer and salary schedule for classified superintendent, Schedule E. This one wasn't amended. No.
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 So moved.
Ms. Rogenko? We haven't actually, we have a, okay, we have a motion and a second.
So moved.
All right. It's not amended. That's why I did a good second, yes.
As stated.
Thank you. As stated.
Yeah, I spoke about this one. This is, job descriptions changed because the traditional responsibilities for the CBO have been modified and, and actually bifurcated between the new position for Mr. Cantwell and for Miriam.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 12O, announcement of the expir- oh, expiration of the terms of office on the School Facilities Oversight Committee and reappointment of members. Mr. Cantwell.
So this is for the School Facility Oversight Committee supporting Measure S. We are coming to the end of a term, and so we're asking for you to appoint the members for this final, the expiration of the six terms for the SFOC members. Recommend Board of Education reappoint the named individuals for two-year terms effective June 1 of '25. They, we don't anticipate them needing to complete those two-year terms because again, we will exhaust the Measure S dollars this fiscal year. And so their final report will be next May.
Any questions? Have a motion? Can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 13, consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve items 13A through 13?
Dr. Agakonian?
Yes.
I actually would like to pull 13D just for further discussion when Dr. Knappick is back with us.
My colleagues okay with that?
Lori is here and she can answer the questions for us.
Oh, come on up, Lori.
Hi, thank you.
Do, do you want to approve everything except that one and then bring that one forward and then Lori can come up?
Sure, whatever works.
Yeah.
That would be 13A to 13, no, wait.
Dr. Agakonian?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve 13A through 13C and 13E through 13P on the consent agenda.
I get a second, please. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we, Lori?
What are your questions, Dr.? 13C. D.
D, 13D.
So I noticed in reading the report that we're switching from the way that we're doing the funding. So I, some of the acronyms I get, some I don't, but like from TP, TPP to, what is it, WCW? I'm wondering if you can just talk a little bit about how that changes for us? And there also seems to be a substantial budget change.
Yes, yes. The program has grown dramatically over the past couple years. You can see that in terms of the funding. We used to be on a weekend work contract.
Right.
Which is one of DOR's programs. And that one is focused on providing one service, which is paid work experiences for students. The TPP, which is a transition partnership program, involves a certified time match. And it's a bigger contract. It's, most of their larger contracts at DOR are on TPPs, not weekend works.
Okay.
It offers three services to the students instead of one. Those three services being workplace readiness, training, job counseling, and paid work-based learning experiences. So it's a broader contract. It's, it's more money for the kids. It's a lot more operating expenses. A lot of this money as well will go to support the FACS program.
Great.
Because the DOR money can go to DOR participants. And all of the students in the two classes that Elaine Howard and Cheryl Ruback run at FACS are DOR participants.
Got it. That, that was what I was looking for, just a little bit of a clearer understanding. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Before you leave for millions of people viewing, your first and last, and your title, I know, we just introduced as Lori.
Absolutely. I'm Lori Schleinkoffer. I'm a program specialist at BUSD. I'm also the coordinator of the Workability Weekend Work Program. That's what it's been called. We're considering beings as it'll be a workability TPP program, considering how to potentially change that name because we're moving to a more comprehensive, we're proposing to move to a more comprehensive program.
And just to clarify, this is an unbelievable program. My questions have nothing to do with how awesome it is. It's expanded so much. It's so positive. I just wanted to make sure I understood the changes before voting on it.
Yeah, it's going great. It is going so great. And I am so proud of the work that our team has done. The amount of placements, that we've grown, we've broadened the sectors that are open for job placements for these kids. We, a few years ago, we had no students with 504 plans in the program at all. And now this year, we should have about 40. So, and we haven't grown our staff at all.
Yeah, no statue.
Yeah, so it's just the three of us. And it's been, it's, we've been so far by working smarter in terms of digitizing our operations. We used to have all paper time sheets and now 75% of our time sheets are all on Google Shared Docs. So the processing of payroll is done so much more efficiently than it was done before. And just all the in-person visits we had to make to pick up these paper time sheets all at once can now be spread out. There's just a lot of great, if you looked through a lot of great expenditures we can do with this additional operating funding. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's more money for the kids. It's more money for the program. It's more money to assist these kids in the transition to productive careers.
Absolutely. Thank you. I really appreciate you taking this.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for item 13?
D.
D. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 14A, reports from the board, board members and your my colleagues. Dr. Weisberg.
Yes. Quickly, quickly, let me get to my notes. Please hold, please hold, please hold. I just wanna thank everybody at Providencia and HART. I was at both schools for their fabulous Open House. I got to experience the egg drop at HART, which was super, super cool. Saw some penguins at Providencia, not real ones, which was a bummer. But thank you. And also really excited about Providencia having a dinner beforehand so families didn't have to worry about dinner and then going to Open House. So just always impressed and super proud of, of both sites. I also wanted to briefly just thank Josh and Western Carpenter's for all the work they do with our Skills USA. Hopefully, we'll be expanding our partnership with our apprenticeship programs. And also just a shout out to Alson Edge. I had, I got to do two mock interviews with Jamari Tijula and Otis Short. They were both exceptional and impressive, and I know we'll get any job that comes their way. So thank you to them.
Dr. Weisberg. Ms. Kana, any, any reports? Okay, we'll come back to you. Clerk Tabit?
Nope, nothing this time.
Yes, Vice President Panser Komkar.
Just, I went to Open House last night, obviously Disney, where I saw the principal of Providencia because her son goes to Disney. So she mentioned that the dinner was a success. And just, are we gonna have a, like a ceremony for Providencia and their California Distinguished School?
Yes.
At some point?
Yes.
Okay, great. The others, I also went to Roosevelt for the second half and was excited to go into classrooms there. As we saw tonight, it's just a really special community. And then today, I had the opportunity of going to LaCo put on a Green Schools Symposium that I randomly got an email from, for, like to my personal email. And I was like, can I come to this? And they let me. But it was really cool. So I just was really reflecting about kind of like, okay, after roofs and HVAC, what can we do that's interesting and innovative? You know, I feel like we heard a lot of desire from our community around green space and outdoor learning spaces and sustainable spaces. And we always hear about like, we wanna do gardens and fruit trees and all this other kind of stuff. And there, it was an interesting conversation, right? To see how other people are doing it or aren't doing it and what, what kind of infrastructure you need in place to make some of those things happen. So that was very cool. And so thanks to LaCo for putting that on.
Thank you. Ms. Kana, you're ready? And by the way, she was having gummy clusters. BUSD Board Meeting brought to you by Nerds Gummy Clusters.
Okay, I went to Stevenson yesterday for Open House. And it is just amazing to see because they did a science before the, before Open House started, they had a science fair type thing. So the kids were out there. And it was really nice because there was parents there too. So parents were helping out with the kids. So they could do a lot more, you know, intricate types of, of science activities and such that they were doing. And so there was balloons with, with, on straws and flying across. And my grandson was sitting there watching. So again, it's always just so, it's so, I don't know, inspiring really as a teacher to go in and see and to see, because this is really the culmination of it, especially elementary school. Middle school, we kind of get a lot more digital. So at the elementary school and to see what the work they'd done, they had done some just amazing work. So congratulations to Katie Murray, who's my grandson's teacher, did some great work, and the other teachers there, and to Jill Johnson. The school looks great. And yeah, and I came off spring break. I survived. I came right back into state testing on Monday, first period. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So I would make this short, but it's been a very busy two weeks. First, I do want to acknowledge my colleague, Dr. Weisberg, who joined me at the steps of the Burbank City Hall.
Yes.
Thank you. As we were commemorated, you know, the 110 anniversary of the Armenian genocide. There were a lot of scouts there, a lot of members of the community. Thank you very much. And I do want to also acknowledge our Congresswoman Laura Friedman, who was there, our Assembly Member Nick Schultz, and our Mayor Nikki Perez as well. Did I miss anyone? Councilmember Konstantin was there. And, and yes, and Councilwoman Zazet Mullins. Thank you for everyone who was there. It's always a moving ceremony, but we made sure that everyone knows that, how supportive this board has been. And as we speak right now, how we've also been very vocal about what's happening in Arts Off right now. Unfortunately, it still continues. I also had the privilege of going to Mirror School. I have a photo I'd like to share next time with, with our viewers where all the students gather. It's beautiful. So what happened was we, this was organized by Ellen Sedraki, the PTA president and the PTA. So thank you very much for Mirror PTA, my school, our school. But the way it was done, I really liked it. We had history teachers bringing groups of students in clusters of 60 to 90. And we had presenters talking to them, including me. So I do want to acknowledge our history teachers and, and faculty and staff, starting with, of course, Principal Dr. Miller, Kathy Gallego, Ken Rice, Shelly Burish, Bill Esperanza, for being there. They were part of the program. It was wonderful. We had videos. But also it followed by music on a quad. There was Armenian food, music, and then photo. I will share with Dr. Paramo and hopefully next time we can show it to her. It was just beautiful. I also want to thank the speakers who were there. Louisa Sharmatian, who, you know, we've talked to several times, especially with her help with the Burbank Music Center. Medea Kalagnomus, who's always been a speaker at our events. Arax Karayan, who's a new parent who talked about her business and the whole story. And of course, Peter Sahakian, who was the maestro, the duduk player, duduk. For those of you don't know what it is, the Armenian instrument. I am the duduk, the duduk. Say it three times. I also was in Sacramento for the Armenian Legislative Caucus Day of Remembrance. I do want to acknowledge our Assembly Member Nick Schultz, who stood and bravely spoke about all the atrocities. I also want to acknowledge Jean Harabedian for bringing forward a resolution from the state and our own Senator, our Senator Sasha Perez, also for bringing forward the resolution. To this day, and this issue is being concerned, they got, they received letters from the Turkish consulate condemning their actions and the Azeri. And for those of you who don't know, Youssef Berkley last week refused to show a film about the Armenian genocide victims. They boycotted it because of the Azeri Council. And two, three of the former alone. So shame on Berkley for doing that. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, oh, retirement. Thank you. Sorry. Yes, we just went over the names. So Bridget Hyfeld, Disney Elementary Teacher, started services in 995. Yes. Anna Maria Moen, teacher at Jefferson Elementary, started in 1499. Marta Walter at Bret Hart, Elementary Principal, began at 2006. This person, next one is, the name is twice, but that two-position, I assume, right? We don't have the same identical people, same, okay, just a bit clarification. Anna Marie Anguma, who was a, oh. Yeah, what is this? I can't see that. Paradectra?
She was a paraeducator.
Oh, paraeducator, sorry. And then campus supervisor from, from year 2025? Wait, wait, no, I'll take it. Hold on. From 92, oh, what is it? Why am I getting, is this 25?
That's her end date, 5/22/25? Yeah, those are the end dates. Began service in 8/9/06?
2006. 8/9/2006. Thank you very much for your services. Julie Arbogast, paraeducator, right? At Special Education at Huerta Middle School. And Juan Carlos Celis, custodian at Jefferson, started at 8/11/11. Wow. And then Amy McGuire, Instructional Resources Assistant at Jefferson Elementary, started in 1993. Yes. Josefina Silva, paraeducator, primary language support, Disney Elementary, started in 2003. Congratulations to all of our retirees. With that, we will be adjourning to tonight's meeting in memory of Jennifer Thompson.